Alderman O'Brien and Alderman at large, Shawna Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 838-9057-8660. The passcode is 401-600. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-589-3329 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I'm home alone.
Alderman Clea.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone in this room.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I can hear everyone and I'm by myself.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I am by myself.
Alderman Tenzin.
I'm present. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm alone here and I can hear you.
Alderman Jenny.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm present, alone and can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present and I'm here. I can hear the proceedings and my daughter is with me.
Alderman Harry Catherine.
I am present. I'm in this room alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 15 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. First, I wanted to mention some good news on the COVID-19 pandemic. Of course, our Public Health Department and Ms. Bagley, Director Bagley is on the call as well, but has been working very hard with respect to trying to eradicate this pandemic. But the numbers are definitely down. Recently, this, within the last couple of days, the count of active cases is 27, down from somewhere in the 80s a month or so ago. Over the winter, that number was almost 600. So we definitely have seen some progress there. In addition, the positivity rate, this is the number of people who are tested for COVID-19, who come up with a test, the so-called positive test indicating that they have the virus, is 2.7%, down from 5% within the last couple of weeks, down from 10 or 12% earlier in the year. So those are definitely good news. In addition, as of about a week ago, the number of adults who were the percentage of the adult population in Nashville who have been fully vaccinated is 35%. And this is as of a week ago, the number of people, including the 35% who've been, had either one dose or are fully vaccinated, is around 48%. Now, we think those numbers are a little higher now just because one more week has gone by. But we still need to get more people vaccinated. Public health is still active getting people vaccinated, holding clinics, and we need to encourage all of our family, friends and neighbors to get vaccinated, protect themselves, their families, friends and our community. But while we're on the subject of public health, Madam President, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Bagley, Director Bagley, for having been recognized by the Women's Foundation, the Hampshire Women's Foundation. They recognize women from around New Hampshire who have contributed to the COVID-19 fight and have contributed during the pandemic. Five of the nominees were picked out for special recognition as honorees statewide. Ms. Bagley was one of those five from the entire state of New Hampshire. So I wanted to congratulate her and again say that she's done a very good job and the recognition was well deserved. Madam President, of course, one of the items we have on tonight's agenda is our 21136, which is the developer agreement with the Nashville Housing Authority for the improvement of the Bronstein site. Right now, there are 48 affordable units there and the proposal that's been worked out and negotiated between the city and the housing authority would enable 216 units. So we would improve the number of affordable housing units in the city by over 160 units. The, as everyone knows, we have a housing crisis here in the city, particularly for those who are on the lower end of the economic spectrum. The number of homeless people has definitely climbed. People who are struggling to pay the rent. People who are having trouble with the rents that have escalated, have gone up significantly over the last few years. And so the supply of housing in general, with a vacancy rate of less than 1%, as well as the supply of affordable housing is definitely too low. This project would be a big step forward. You know, in order to make this project possible, the city would allocate home funds. Those are federal funds that are used to subsidize and make sure that affordable housing projects can actually happen. And the city has worked out a pilot standing for payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $225,000 a year. Now, the housing authority is a nonprofit and therefore may not be taxable at all. But we, there is a private developer in this project. So the city negotiated with the housing authority over a period of weeks and arrived at a figure of $225,000 on annual payment. Right now, Bronstein is not paying anything. No pilot, no taxes, no payment in lieu of taxes, zero. So this is an increase, Madam President, of $225,000 a year in addition to the very significant increase in the amount of affordable housing units that will become available in the city. Now, I think there's some misunderstanding regarding this because some people from the Board of Public Works meeting yesterday got the idea that some people think that, well, we are reducing the amount of taxes that the city would get. Well, that's not really true because without the home funds, without a pilot agreement, without some of the other features of this development agreement, there would be no, there will be no project. There will not be any additional affordable units. Bronstein will continue to pay zero instead of the $225 that's been agreed to under the development agreement. So I think all in all, given the need of people in the city for housing, given the economic struggles that many are undergoing and given the kind of sorry state that, or you know, that Bronstein, the site could be in better shape and this will definitely improve it. Given all those features, the project is a very good one and I hope that the Board of Aldermen will move forward and improve it. Madam President, I also wanted to address a rather unfortunate incident in the city. The, in the last few days of last week or so, one of our very active, energetic, positive state representatives has been attacked with hate speech. In addition to that, the, there have been some tags on the rail trail over one of the murals that are also very hateful. Our state representative is someone who is a credit to the community and who we are very glad that is part of Nashville. And as you know, we are an inclusive community. We're one that where everyone is welcome, where everyone is valued and no one is left behind. That is our, that is our belief. So I want to mention and announce, this is being organized privately, but there will be a rally against hate coming up on June 2nd at Greeley Park, I believe, in the evening. That is something that we will use to reinforce the values of the community, of inclusion, of everyone is valued. No one is not part of our community. So I hope people who are in town then can attend that June 2nd rally. Madam President, I assume you saw the recommendations from the Board of Health regarding masks, recommending that the protocols be reduced or eliminated, but that a strong set of recommendations covering a number of circumstances be put in a place. And there's quite a bit of detail there. And before I conclude, Madam President, we are, we will be coming up with the City Lights Award that is going to go to United Way for all their important work in the community. The City Lights Award is something that's been given for a long time to, and it's decided upon by a group of, a committee of citizens. It's given to a person, organization in the community who has just contributed in a very significant way. And I want to congratulate United Way for this well-deserved award. And I will have, you know, the proclamation when it comes time to do that. And that concludes my remarks unless there are questions, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Any response to their remarks, Mayor? Alderman Lopez.
So I appreciate the mayor's comments regarding the need for vaccination, especially on this board as we take a look at applying the Board of Health's recommendations and looking at the mask ordinance and making all those changes that recommended. It's important to encourage the public to vaccinate, particularly because it was only last week that youths 12 to 16 were fully authorized to be vaccinated. And that means that the vast majority of people who can vaccinate and have access to vaccinations are adults. So this is our responsibility. We need to be a human shield in this case because kids under 12 still can't get vaccinated. If COVID-19 starts to outbreak in a community, they're extremely vulnerable. That was a large part of the concern that has held public health from making more immediate updates to the masking ordinance. Just because somebody else is doing something doesn't mean it's a good idea to do it. Just because the cities and municipalities around us follow the governor's lead and not the governor's medical advisors' leads regarding the masking ordinance doesn't mean that we as Nashawans don't want to care for our children. So it's important for us to consider that if people have been putting it off and just haven't gotten around to it, because I've heard a number of people saying, oh gee, yeah, I should get on that now. It's time to shift gears. There isn't a waiting list. There isn't, you can schedule an appointment, but you don't have to be under a certain age limit. As adults get vaccinated, you will reduce the amount of likelihood that somebody else will get it from you by reducing the likelihood that you will get it. And it's important to do that for all of the members of our community, including the most vulnerable. This particular pandemic has been characterized by the most vulnerable. I appreciate all of the Nashawans who have really made massive changes and sacrifices to their lives in order to protect those most vulnerable. And I think that's a testament to our ideology as a community. As the mayor also mentioned, we have been experiencing tagging vandalism, more specifically, white supremacy messages in Ward 4. People who've been on the board for a while, this is not a shocker to you. I've announced like as far back as I can recall, I think probably four years ago, there were concerns among neighbors about whether they were going to be deported because there were those comments being put out in the community. There were stickers being put out. There were comments being made. We've seen pushback against Black Lives Matter where that message is Black Lives Matter 2 and it's not good enough for people. Like they have to make a point of saying, oh, lives matter and, you know, try to challenge the position that Black Lives Matter is trying to say, that there are inconsistencies in how police conduct is applied. There are statistical anomalies in terms of overrepresentation and that we need to address that. So this is not a brand new experience. What is brand new is that a state representative called out the public about it and brought attention to the issue and members of the public felt entitled to challenge that representative's legitimacy based completely on his name. So the lack of personal insight, we can pull a person to address a comment about white supremacy being a thing and systemic racism still existing with a response basically saying, yes, and you are a problem and therefore we need to motivate you and remove all of your people because you're occupying our land, is fantastically inappropriate. It's a problem for our community. It's a danger. It's something that Nashville PD and the FBI do take very seriously and have been working very closely with us on. As neighbors, we've been painting those murals repeatedly over and over again because it's important not to just paint over them, but to create something in its place. So we haven't just colored over the murals when somebody puts a tag on there. We've enhanced them. We've updated. We've made them better. We'll continue to do that. We have plenty of paint. That's what the neighborhood is all about. And there's a lot more artists in this neighborhood than your average artist, or your average neighborhood. So we can handle this as a community, but what's important is that Nashville know that this is happening. And I think what's very important is that there have been a lot of other communities that have been saying the same thing, whether it's the synagogues, whether it's the immigrant community. These people have been targeted and they're not alone in their being targeted. They have that shared goal. And I think all of us share the sentiment that that's not Nashville. That's not appropriate. And that's not what our city is all about. So hopefully we can build something out of this instead of just painting it over. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Anyone else?
Yes, can I ask a question?
This is only for the board members. We'll have a public comment period shortly.
Well, can we turn the comments back on? It's a violation of Article 22 Freedom of Speech. That's a form of speech. So if we could turn the comments back on, that would be great.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. I'd like to express my solidarity with Alderman Lopez. I can't improve on his statements, but want to thank him for expressing what he did and I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Hey, recognition period.
Gate City Light Award.
I will recognize Mayor Donches to present the award.
Thanks, Madam President. I have the city proclamation here, which you can sort of see on the camera. This, of course, honors United Way of Greater Nashville and I believe we have Mr. Appelberg here to accept or at least acknowledge the award. He's the executive director of the United Way. Whereas the mayor's volunteer recognition committee is proud to present the 2021 Gate City Light Award to the United Way of Greater Nashville. This award is given yearly to a local organization or nonprofit for giving their time in the spirit of the community and for making significant contributions to the people of Nashville. This year, the United Way has done that and more. And whereas throughout the pandemic, the United Way and its dedicated volunteers stepped up to help when it was needed most. More than 10,000 food items were collected at several food drives. Fifteen pop-up food pantries served 8,000 people. More than 250,000 face masks were handed out to the public and volunteers who supported COVID-19 testing and vaccination clinics. In addition, United Way volunteers assisted with refurbishing 750 laptops for local students to use with online learning, implemented a volunteer school tutoring program, packaged and distributed more than 500 gallons of hand sanitizer and much more. Whereas this is the first time that United Way has received the Gate City Light Award, it is certainly well-deserved for their continuous commitment to our community. Since its founding in 1930, United Way has kept up its mission to serve Greater Nashville, investing in health, education and economic mobility for all. And whereas it is with great pleasure that we honor this organization and its leadership team, Mike Appelberg, Sarah Caesar, Liz Fitzgerald and Samantha Casista, their Board of Directors and many of amazing volunteers for all that they've done. Now, therefore, I, Jim Donches, Mayor of the City of Nashville and the Board of Aldermen, on May 25th, 2021, do hereby recognize the United Way of Greater Nashville for its unwavering dedication to our community. Congratulations on this award. And I don't know if Mike wants to say a few words, but I see him on the meeting.
Mr. Appelberg.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam President. So first of all, I would like to acknowledge my colleague Sarah Caesar, who I also see on the chat. Sarah is our Director of Volunteer Engagement and played a very, very heavy role in the lift that it took this year to respond to the pandemic at United Way. So Sarah, thank you. I also see many of you who have volunteered with us throughout the year, not the least of which is superhero volunteer of the year Patricia Clea, who of those 250,000 face masks probably handed out three quarters of them herself. So we're honored and it's our pleasure to serve and thank you very much. We really truly appreciate the recognition.
Well deserved. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's very well deserved. Thank you, Sarah, and whoever else from the United Way might be on the meeting this evening. Thank you so much. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Aldermen meetings of May 11th and May 17, 2021, accepted, placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications require and only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Two communications have been received from Lori Wiltshire, President of the Board of Aldermen, on special Board of Aldermen meetings, one on June 8, 2021, relative to a presentation on the emergency operations plan and on June 1st, 2021, relative to a public hearing on Resolution R 21145 from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communication received from the public. Four communications have been received from Matt Sullivan, Planning Manager, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen on the following proposed resolutions. R 21135, authorizing a First Amendment to purchase and sale agreement for real property located at 141143 Burke Street, MAP 11 Lot 158. R 21136, authorizing developer agreement with payment in lieu of taxes, pilot for Bronstein redevelopment. Resolution R 21144, authorizing the purchase of property located at L Pine Street, MAP 77 Lot 5. And R 21145, in amendments to approved fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvement Program, CIP.
There being no objections, I will suspend the rules to allow the three communications that were received after the agenda was prepared.
Communications have been received from Lisa M. Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolution R 21136, from Stephen A. Bolton, Corporation Counsel, regarding Board of Health recommendations regarding face coverings, and from Dr. Stephanie Wilson Blum regarding ordinance O 21065.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Next is our period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. While it's not on our agenda for a second reading, I understand that there may be a motion on the mask ordinance, so I will allow public comment on that this evening during the first public comment period. So if you wish to speak, there's a three-minute limit. I see Alicia Houston. Name and address for the record, please.
So can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So my name's Alicia Houston. I am Westwood Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire. Thank you, Aldermen and Alderwomen. My public comment this evening is simple. I am asking you to lift the city mask mandate effective immediately upon voting. My reasoning for this is we will be losing much business in Nashville as many have already begun shopping elsewhere with the updated, with upcoming holiday weekend. Businesses are still within their rights to have a mask policy in place. That is not something as a city that is in accordance with U.S. Code 21, Section 360BBB, 3, Letter E, Roman numeral 3, Roman numeral 3. Additionally, the continued mandate for facial coverings and incentivizing of vaccinations to gain access to public buildings or events is discriminatory against those who are protected under the Geneva Convention and Nuremberg Codes, which the United States is signatory. That includes Nashville, New Hampshire. The governor has lifted the mask mandate throughout the state, which puts us behind the other cities and towns, further harming our local businesses and population. I'm graciously asking that the removal of the mask mandate be upheld and voted yes in effective date of midnight tonight, May 25th. Also, if you would all please kindly check your email, there is a petition assigned by a number of registered, sorry, by a number of residents. That is a petition for the removal of the mask mandate as is unconstitutional under the U.S. Code 21.
All right, next I have Beth.
Hi, Beth Scare, East Hobart Street. I'm just, would like to also ask for you to lift the mask mandate. You know, this could be the reward for people getting vaccinated. If you continue with the mask mandate, people are going to figure, what the heck? Why bother? It makes it seem like the vaccines aren't really going to do us any good. So this should be the reward for our long suffering and taking the vaccinations and our businesses. And we our businesses really need the boost. Thank you.
Matthew Solan. Matthew?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. My name is Matthew Solan. I live in Nashua at 5 Bishop Drive. And I would like to ask the Aldermen to please end the mandate to wear masks in Nashua. However, the bill that was presented should be amended. I think that extending that until June does not make any sense. We know that South Massachusetts is beginning there on Friday. The rest of the state essentially is already ended that mandate. I believe that the legislation should be amended to basically end this requirement as soon as legislation is passed. There's no need to further delay it. And that went along in Nashua, with the rest of New Hampshire, and also with what's been suggested by the CDC. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Paula Johnson.
Good evening, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Paula Johnson. As we know, I'm a member of the Board of Education, but I am speaking for myself tonight and has nothing to do with the board. Sorry, want to make that perfectly clear. I'm asking you to please drop the mask mandate. And according to Executive Order 74, I'd like to read that to the board. It says, and this is part of it, "Nothing in this order shall be construed to prevent municipalities within the state of New Hampshire from enacting their own ordinances related to wearing a mask or face covering that contains stricter provisions than contain within the order." I want you to put that in because I don't want anybody to say you left it out. This order shall not apply to the following, and this is very important. Educated students and staff within K through 12 schools. So we missed the boat on that one. Any person with a medical condition or disability that prevents wearing a mask or other face covering. That should have been, the first ordinance was correct. The second one, you said that we had to have note. Any person consuming food or drink or sitting at a restaurant or table to eat or drink. Any person engaged in physical strenuous physical activity. That would be students and also city workers. Any person giving a religious, political, media, educational, cultural, musical, or theatrical presentation or performance for an audience. Any person who is deaf or hard of hearing, and any person while communicating with an individual who is deaf or hard of hearing, or who has a disability, medical condition, or mental health condition that makes communication with that individual while wearing while wearing a mask or face covering difficult. Any person obtaining or providing a service that requires a temporary removal of a mask or face covering. Any person asked to remove a mask or face covering to verify an identity for lawful purposes, or any public safety worker actively actively engaged in public safety roles, and when a mask or face covering would seriously interfere in the performance of their public safety. Now, this is the most important paragraph. Any person who declines to wear a mask or face covering because of a medical or developmental issue or difficulty breathing. Now, this is state supersedes city, and we all know that, and federal supersedes state and city, shall not be shall not be required to produce documentation, I'm going to repeat that again, shall not be required to produce documentation or other evidence verifying the condition. So when we, the people, go into a store and cannot wear a mask because of health reasons, this tells it all. This is the document from the governor, whether you like the governor or not, and I'm not a fan of the governor. This is what the governor wrote in Executive Order 74, and I believe that was in last March. It was January. This order shall remain in effect through January 20. So this is last year. This is last year. And this was, as a matter of fact, March 13, 2020. And I slipped, and that's not like me to slip and not find things, but what's going on in the schools. I'm asking that the city please lift this. Let our children be chosen and be able to breathe and enjoy themselves and see people's faces once again. Thank you very much for allowing me the time.
Erin Pincasek.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Erin Pincasek. I live on Dow Road in Hollis, New Hampshire. And I'm asking that this mask mandate, which in and of itself violates state law, be lifted. I'm going to read a state law here. It's a real short one. It's Section 354-A:16, which deals with public accommodations. It says, "Equal access to public accommodations is a civil right. The opportunity for every individual to have equal access to places of public accommodation without discrimination because of age, sex, gender, identity, race, creed, color, marital status, physical or mental disability, or national origin is hereby recognized and declared to be a civil right." That is existing state law. I'll say it again. It's Section 354-A:16. The ADA defines places of public accommodation as a private entity that owns, operates, leases, or leases to a place of public accommodation. Those places include a wide range of entities such as restaurants, hotels, theaters, doctors' offices, pharmacies, retail stores, museums, libraries, and the list goes on. You can look it up. Go look at the ADA website. The key word in RSA 354-A:16 is creed. Creed means any system or codification of belief or opinion. You can look that up as well, right? So if someone believes for religious reasons, for any reason whatsoever, for health reasons, as the previous woman just described, that they don't need to wear a mask, then they don't have to, according to the state law, which supersedes Nashua Board of Aldermen's authority. Right? So you need to lift this illegal mandate now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Dr. Granik.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I live in Manchester, 290 North Street. I am the Medical Director for the Division of Public Health, and I work at both hospitals in Nashua as an infectious disease expert. From a public health perspective, I am going to respectfully ask that the mandate be left in place for public transportation, for medical facilities where vulnerable people do not have the choice as to whether they may be sitting next to or in a room with someone who's deciding not to mask for their own protection and to help the public. This is what we do, I think, to keep each other safe. And I think businesses should have the right to decide if people who are going to patronize their business or work in their business should wear a mask to keep the rest of their patrons and employees safe. Thank you.
AJ Todd.
Yes, hi. I just want to, I'm going to keep it simple. I just, I don't support, I support the lifting of the mask mandate effective immediately. And I want to state something straight from our Constitution's Article 34, Martial Law Limited. No person can in any case be subjected to martial law or to any pains or penalties by virtue of that law, except those employed by the Army or Navy and accept militia in active service, but by authority of the legislature. And I mentioned this specifically right here. It says, "or to any pains or penalties." The fact of the matter is that I know for a fact that there's people on the board itself that suffered pains and penalties from this, from all the restrictions we've put on this COVID-19. And our own children are suffering from having pains and penalties from COVID-19 restrictions. And I don't support the wearing of these masks anymore. I support those that want to wear them on their own, but I don't think it's ethical, and I think it's highly unconstitutional for us to keep up this mask mandate. And that's all I have to say.
Kara Cantwell.
Hi, my name is Kara Cantwell. I live on Chatham Street in Nashua, and I just want to add my voice to the others tonight and ask you to please remove the mask mandate. I fully support those who need to wear them for medical reasons or whatnot, but it needs to be a choice. And especially for our children in the schools. They need to be able to make that choice to not wear them. Again, what the other lady had mentioned, those who have health issues and of that nature, we need to be able to make this a choice. That is all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that wishes to give public comment?
Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'd like to support lifting the mandate. I have one quick question as I scroll through the end of the board packet. The ordinance is attached to this, and it has written in there that it's in effect until 11:59 at night on June 8. And I don't know if it was written that way, or that's what you're hoping to enforce. I just didn't understand if that was pre-language that had already been put in. But I would like to see it lifted, and I would like to see it lifted unconditionally. Those who are uncomfortable about removing their mask will certainly wear one and have the option to wear one, but I don't think any place else should require it. I know if there's a restaurant in Nashua that wants to keep it active, I wouldn't go to it. Today, I had lunch with an individual up in Manchester. I picked Manchester because they lifted the mandate, and it was really nice to walk into a restaurant and not have to worry about it. And I only saw one individual that was wearing a mask in there in a pretty active place with indoor and outdoor seating. So I would like to see it lifted unconditionally, and those who certainly feel that they need the protection or feel more comfortable wearing a mask could certainly do so. Thank you.
I'm getting called one more time for public comment.
This is Matt Solan.
Matt, it's one moment, please. Matt, you've already spoken, right?
I did. I just wanted to address something that somebody had brought up.
Okay, I'll give you one minute.
Yes, just the gentleman who brought up the suggestion to require it on public transit. Just want to note, there's no need for the city to have enforcement to do that. There's a federal requirement that is in place until September 30 that requires wearing a face covering on any public transit in the United States. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Manager, on behalf of the Conservation Commission regarding authorization request of $24,500 from the Board of Aldermen from the Conservation Fund, Number 4080, to define and improve the Salmon Brook Trail section between Ingalls Street and Burke Street within the Joyce Park Wildlife Sanctuary.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication referred to the Budget Review Committee.
Communication has been received from Linda LaPlaine, Library Trustee's Chairman, regarding appointing an Alderman to the Strategic Planning Team.
There being no objection, I have appointed Alderman Schmidt to the Strategic Planning Team, and I want to thank her for doing that.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant.
Alderman Clea. Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, award a multi-year independent contract for administering housing opportunities for persons with AIDS with Harbor Homes Incorporated in the amount of $1,396,732. Funding will be through Department 171 Community Services Fund, 55699. Other contract services by roll call, please.
Is there discussion on that motion? Saying none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow. Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
And may I call for Alderman Dow one more time? I did not record his vote.
Yes, couldn't get off mute.
Thank you. You have 15 yeas and zero mays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a contract award in excess of $1 million for Transit Center rehab construction.
Alderman Lou.
I apologize. I I move that we accept. I I don't have it in.
Okay. Would you like me to read the motion?
I appreciate that. Yeah.
A motion by Alderwoman Lou to accept, place on file, and award a contract for the construction work at the Transit Center and the adjacent pavement and site work to D.L. King &amp; Associates in the amount of $1,129,710. Funding will be through Department 186 Transportation Fund, 81650 Land Improvements, and 54210 Land Hazard Remediation by roll call. That's Alderman Lou's motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero mays.
And that motion carries.
A communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for Nashua Transit Center and Transit Administration Building Cleaning.
Alderman Lou? Would you like me to read the motion?
Um. I guess so.
Motion by Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you.
You're welcome, is to accept, place on file, and award a contract for Nashua Transit System Cleaning Services to build world-class cleaning services in the amount of $46,800, $15,600 per year. Funding will be through Department 186 Transportation Fund, 5454200 Janitorial Services by roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero mays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for engineering services for highway, bridge, traffic, and pedestrian infrastructure.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year on-call engineering services contract with Hoyle Tanner &amp; Associates, Inc., of Manchester, New Hampshire, and further to approve Task Order Number 1 under that contract for structural investigations in an amount not to exceed $14,251. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering Fund, General Account Category 53 Professional and Technical Services, $12,000, and Department 161 Streets Fund Capital Activity Infrastructure Improvements. By roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract award in excess of $1 million for two pumper trucks for Nashua Fire Rescue.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Madam President, I would like to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase of two 2021 Pierce Arrow XT Pumpers and Fed Up from Allegiance Fire and Rescue in the amount of $1,454,974. Funding will be through Department 152 Fire Rescue Fund, SURF 81500 Vehicles by roll call.
I'm just going to make a slight correction. The amount was $1,454,947.
Was mine cheaper, Madam President? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, recycling refrigerant CFCs.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Madam President, I motion to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year contract between the City of Nashua and Ondis Mechanical and Appliance LLC of Merrimack, New Hampshire, for refrigerant recovery CFCs services at the Nashua Recycling Center at an annual cost not to exceed $20,000, pending approval of the FY '22 operating budget. Terms of this contract will be July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Funding will be through Department I68, I'm sorry, 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification, 55 other contracted services by roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for air quality in landfill gas testing.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year contract for air quality in landfill gas sampling and analysis services at Shady Lane Landfill and New Searl School for the Solid Waste Department with TRC of Manchester, New Hampshire, in the amount not to exceed $69,300. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification, 53 Professional and Technical Services by roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for water quality testing.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file, approve a three-year contract with ChemServ Environmental Analyst of Milford, New Hampshire for water quality testing services at Nashua landfill sites for the Solid Waste Department in the amount not to exceed $129,797. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification, 53 Professional and Technical Services by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion?
Yes.
Seeing no discussion.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for recycling scrap metal.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year contract between the City of Nashua and Winfield Alloy, Inc. of Atkinson, New Hampshire for the recycling of scrap metal at the Fry Hills Landfill. The terms of this contract will be from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, pending the approval of fiscal year '22 operating budget. Revenue generated through this contract will be directed to Department Number 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification, 44 charges for services, and I'd like to make this motion by roll call.
Discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
And if I may call for Alderman Clemmons, again, I did not record his vote.
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award, recycling electronic waste.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Lou would like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year contract between the City of Nashua and North Coast Services LLC of Conk in New Hampshire for the processing and disposal of electronic waste from the Nashua Recycling Center at an annual cost not to exceed $75,225,000 total amount, pending approval of fiscal year '22 operating budget. The terms of this contract will be from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification, 55 contracted services by roll call.
Discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Larry D. Goodyou, Chief Executive Officer, Penachuk Corporation, regarding Penachuk East Utility, Inc., request for approval of term loan with ProBank ACB.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and refer it to the Penachuk Special Water Committee. Petitions?
A petition has been received for a street discontinuance, Old Grattan Road.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to accept the petition for street discontinuance of Old Grattan Road as read, refer it to the Committee on Infrastructure, Nashua City Planning Board, and that a special Board of Aldermen public hearing be scheduled for Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM by roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
And that motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Mark Mehan of 65 Walden Pond Drive, Nashua, to the Planning Board for a term to expire May 31st, 2024, and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer it to the appointment to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 10th, 2021 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 12th, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 13th Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 17th, 2021 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 18th, 2021 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 19th, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of a Budget Review Committee meeting held Monday, May 24th, 2021 regarding proposed Resolution 21-132. Alderman Dow.
Yes, last evening, we had the first in-chamber committee meeting, trying to get back in the chamber one step at a time. It worked fairly well. We had a couple minor glitches, but it was okay. And the budget meetings will be in the chamber from here on out. The public, we went over the Public Health Department, but we also went over R21-132, which is an agreement with the police unions relative to a health incentive, and it's coming up later in a motion. And Deputy Chief Testaverde is here if there are any questions.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution R21-130 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of up to $220,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R21-130 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero maes.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21-130 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R21-132, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashua Police Commission and the National Police Supervisors Association, and the Nashua Police Commission, and the Nashua Police Patrolmen's Association regarding a wellness incentive program.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R21-132 by roll call, and I'd like to talk to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, last night was unanimously approved at the Budget Committee. Deputy Chief Testaverde had come in and given an explanation. What this does is it's a wellness program that allows the police officers to get in better shape, stay in better shape, and if they pass certain requirements, they will get some incentives. I'd like to be able to have Deputy Testaverde give us a very quick overview, and then if there are questions, I'm sure he'll answer them. Deputy Testaverde?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Briefly, the state standard for physical fitness for police officers under the Cooper Standard, which is a national standard that's been around for decades, is the 35th percentile, which is abysmally low and embarrassing to say in public. That is the state standard. That's not the NPD standard. What we have proposed here is that if our officers on a voluntary basis, when they take their annual physical fitness tests, wish to take the incentive program and can score at an 80th percentile or higher, they would get a wellness day off, or the 90th percentile or higher, they would be entitled to two wellness days off. The benefit of the days off are, one, they cannot take them on any major holidays, and, two, they can be denied by administration if they incur overtime. Finally, and as I said before, it's totally on a voluntary basis, but wellness promotes good physical health, promotes good mental health, promotes longevity and retention in this field, and also cuts down on absenteeism. I'll entertain any questions or can go in more depth if anyone would like.
Does anyone have questions? Does anyone have questions? I don't see anyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Chief.
The motion before us is for final passage of resolution twenty-one, one-thirty-two. If there's no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and resolution twenty-one, one-thirty-two is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R twenty-one, one-thirty-four, relative to the supplemental appropriation of thirty thousand dollars of unanticipated revenue into Department one-sixty, Public Works Administration and Engineering.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to make a motion for final passage of R dash twenty-one dash one-thirty-four by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of resolution twenty-one, one-thirty-four, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and resolution twenty-one, one-thirty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R twenty-one, one-thirty-five, authorizing a First Amendment to purchase and sale agreement for real property located at one forty-one to one forty-three Burke Street, map eleven, lot one fifty-eight.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-one, one-thirty-five by roll call.
The motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries, resolution twenty-one, one-thirty-five is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R twenty-one, one-thirty-six, authorizing developer agreement with payment in lieu of taxes pilot for Bronstein, excuse me, Bronstein redevelopment.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President, I move for final passage of R twenty-one dash one-thirty-six by roll call.
I'd just also like to note that the, there was a favorable recommendation on this resolution from the Board of Public Works. Is there discussion on the motion for final passage? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries, resolution twenty-one, one-thirty-six is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R twenty-one, one-forty, authorizing the city of Nashville to enter into a contract with the town of Merrimack for transit services.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Madam President, I motion for final passage of R dash one-four-zero by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries, resolution twenty-one, one-forty is duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R twenty-one, one-forty-four, authorizing the purchase of property located at Alpine Street, map seventy-seven, lot five.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-one, one-forty-four by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jenny.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So this resolution is, you know, regarding the land that is, it's located just south of the Nashville River, north of the Cove, kind of west of the Mill Yard property. And it has a radio antenna on it. So this, this was reviewed by the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I think the planning, the planning board, and maybe another committee who are all recommending final passage. But the, it's a purchase and sale agreement. This resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of that land at a price of three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. There's a companion resolution, which is R twenty-one dash one-forty-five, which has been referred to the Budget Review Committee. But there's a public hearing scheduled for, I think it's, I think it's June first, next week, regard, regarding that, and that, that resolution authorizes the transfer of three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand from bond money that was left over from the Broad Street Parkway in repurposing it into, for this purpose. So it, it makes sense to me that, you know, rather than passing this tonight, we ought to wait until the public has an opportunity to express it, any opinions it may have at the public hearing, and then that the Budget Review Committee, you know, reviews whether or not to recommend the transfer of the money, and then you know, then, then that would be ready for us to pass at our next meeting, which would be June eighth. You know, until that happens, we don't, we don't really have the money to, to, to pay for it, for this purchase and sale agreement. So I, I, I talked to Director Cummings, and he said he would have no objection to postponing this to allow for the public hearing, and then take it up at our next meeting at June eighth. So I would like to make a motion to postpone this until our meeting of June eighth.
Is that the scene, is the motion to table Attorney Bolton?
I think that would actually be classified as a motion to postpone to a time certain that is debatable, but only as to when the appropriate time is.
Okay. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tenza.
So, Madam President, I'll just say, my recollection of discussion of this in committee was that in, in going forward with the purchase and sale, it would allow the city to do some due diligence on the property now, before, before the money was approved. I, I don't doubt that Alderman Jettie had that conversation with Director Cummings, but I believe it's still, we, we could still pass this tonight. It would, it would allow, well, we would enter into the purchase and sale. I'll defer to Attorney Bolton, or maybe ask Attorney Bolton. I don't believe there are any, any damages that the city would, would incur if for one reason or another, we did not, we had to pull out of the purchase and the sale, purchase and sale of this land in the future, correct?
On that I know, it's always possible, but I don't think that's a major concern. I think if the desire is to purchase this property, that can readily be accomplished. We're, we're hardly down to our last three-hundred thousand dollars.
So the motion is to postpone to, to our next meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
Sorry about the dogs, yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
You have six yeas and nine nays.
And that motion fails. The motion before us is to, for final passage. Is there further discussion on the motion for final passage? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Abstain.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas, two nays, and one extension.
Can I ask who was abstaining from voting? Alder Woman Kelly.
I tried to ask your question, and I was, was not recognized.
But you can't abstain if you're, you don't have a conflict. I'm sorry I didn't see you, you could have spoken up.
Speaking of now.
Okay, you can't abstain if you're here, if you're here.
And my vote is no.
Okay.
You have twelve yeas and three nays.
And that motion carries, resolution twenty-one, one-forty-four is duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance oh twenty-one, sixty-one, changing the location of the handicapped parking space on Water Street.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage by roll call.
Yeah, I think you have another motion, Alderman Lopez.
I gotta scroll down, sorry about that, everybody. I'd like to make a motion to amend oh twenty-one, sixty-one by replacing it with the golden rod copy of amendments recommended at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Lopez.
I don't think there's an actual golden rod, I think we're all using digital here. But the gist of the changes that we made, and Alderman Jettie can probably elaborate a little bit, because he's the one who spotted it, was the legislation didn't exactly target the space that needed to be moved. So they were amending it after the meeting in order to make sure that the correct space was being moved. There was the conclusion, however, that they could move the space anyway, because we empowered the mayor to make adjustments as needed due to the downtown parking barriers. And the reason why this is particularly important is because we need to make sure that we opened up a space where it was needed by a restaurant that is opening. So Alderman Jenny, if you have any comments on that you'd like to add?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chairman.
Alderman Jenny.
So during our, our discussion, it was pointed out to us by the new owner of the Sub-Zero Ice Cream Shop on the corner of Water and Main Street, that the handicap spots are actually on a, on a severe incline. And Alderman Lopez also noted that, that that was not the best place for a handicap spot, that it would be better to be a, a, a more level area, and and also, Mr. McCabe from Sub-Zero pointed out that there's a hydrant there. And so if the space were put right in front of the hydrant, the next space available beyond the fifteen feet from the hydrant where you can't park, it would allow more, it would make the spot more accessible to handicap people using that handicap spot. So that's, that's where we moved it to, it's the first spot east of the hydrant. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is to amend ordinance twenty-one, sixty-one. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alder Woman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
Now that we have amended the motion, so that the parking space will not result in somebody rolling into the river, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of oh twenty-one, oh sixty-one as amended by roll call.
Motion is to, for, for final passage, ordinance twenty-one, sixty-one as amended by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Teddy.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries ordinance twenty one sixty one is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of resolution R twenty one one forty six, authorizing Penetech Corporation and Penetech East Utility Inc. to enter into a term loan with CoBank ACB.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Law, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Cleve, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harry Gathery. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penetech Water Special Committee.
First reading of resolution R twenty one one forty seven, authorizing the conveyance of discontinued portions of Old Grattan Road.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cleve, Alderman Harry Gathery. Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou. Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure, the National Planning Board, and schedule a special board of Alderman public hearing on Wednesday, June twenty third, twenty twenty one at seven PM. New business ordinances.
Alderman Willshire.
Alderman Dow.
Yes. Uh, I'd like to suspend the rules as to introduce a first reading of ordinance R twenty one one forty eight that I received this afternoon from legal. And uh, I'll read the, I think everyone was sent a copy. If you'd like, I can read it and then talk to it.
Sure.
So the resolution is R twenty one one forty eight, authorizing the acquisition of a portion of property at forty four Buck Meadow Road Tax Map C Lot twenty five. City of Nashville in the year two thousand and twenty one, resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashville that the mayor is authorized to purchase a portion of the property located at forty four Buck Meadow Road Tax Map C Lot twenty five, shown as the area of acquisition on the attached plan for consideration on terms to be mutually agreed upon by the city and the sellers. Further resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashville that the mayor will assist the Office of Corporation Council is authorized to prepare and execute all necessary documents related to such purchase. Funds for the new purchase will come from Fund fifty eight hundred School Capital Projects Fund, Project New Middle School Account eight one six zero zero land. Um, the analysis reads this resolution would authorize the city to acquire a portion of the property at forty four Buck Meadow Road for consideration and on terms to be negotiated with the sellers. This is the same parcel which is before the board on petition for street layout. In a parallel process, uh, to the layout petition, the city reached out to the owners of the parcel in an attempt to negotiate a direct purchase in lieu of taking for the land necessary for the road, new road. This legislation authorizes such a direct purchase on terms to be mutually agreed upon and approved by the Board of Aldermen. Funds for the purchase will come from Fund five eight zero zero School Capital Projects Fund, New Middle School Account eight one six zero zero land. Chapter seventy seven provides the planning board will review and make recommendations to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen on the purchase and the sale of any land on the city. Uh, this, this, uh, we've had unexpected, successful negotiations with the owners of this property. This is the last little piece that connects the land that we bought previously with the school property. It's a very small lot. Um, and uh, we weren't sure whether we would be successful in purchasing it, but it looks like we are at a very reasonable price and uh, we have a meeting with them tomorrow. And Seal Attorney Leonard suggested that we get this in front of the board for its first reading. Uh, it's, we're not passing anything tonight. We're not authorizing anything tonight. Uh, I'm going to presume that the President will send it to infrastructure and to the planning board. Where we'll get recommendations back. By the time it goes to infrastructure, we will have all of the details. If anybody has any questions, I could address them.
Well, the motion is to suspend the rules, so.
Okay.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries.
And first reading of resolution R twenty one one forty eight, authorizing the acquisition of a portion of property at forty four Buck Meadow Road Tax Map C Lot twenty five.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Harry Gathery, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Cleve.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly. Okay, given its first reading, I will, is someone still trying to, Alderman Laws. Anyone else? I got you already here, Alderman Gathery.
Oh no, I was just moving my hand, sorry.
Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the National City Planning Board. New business ordinances.
So the process is, is simple.
First reading of ordinance oh twenty one sixty four, authorizing a police parking only parking space on Ash Street.
And yeah, I'm just going to share.
I'm not truly speaking, but could I, could you please mute? Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, did, did you read the ordinance?
I can reread that if you would like.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's the first reading of ordinance oh twenty one sixty four, authorizing a police parking only parking space on Ash Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dow, Alderman Schmidt. I don't want to miss anybody. Alderman Cleve, Alderman Lou. Alderman Harry Gathery. Alderman Cleaver. Anyone else? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance oh twenty one sixty five, rescinding the face coverings ordinances.
Additional sponsors.
I had a motion.
I got a call for additional sponsors and then you can make a motion.
Okay.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dow, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harry Gathery, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Lou.
Alderwoman Lou.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly. Anyone else? Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I uh, would move to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of ordinance twenty one zero sixty five.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, I'd like to note that it's twenty one one dash one sixty five, not zero six five.
No, it's zero six five.
No, it's zero six five.
My mistake then, sorry.
That's okay.
Alderman Harry Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Reading, um, sorry, oh, second reading of ordinance oh twenty one sixty five, rescinding the face covering ordinances.
Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would make a motion to amend ordinance twenty one zero sixty five uh, to make the rescission effective as of uh, twelve oh one AM, May twenty sixth.
Okay.
And I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So, when I um, had put this ordinance in, I had anticipated that, actually put this in after the um, CDC had recommended um, that those who are vaccinated uh, no longer needed to wear a face mask in public. Um, and it was only after the fact that um, our health department here in Nashville made a similar recommendation. Uh, and so, um, with that, um, the, with those two things, um, being said, I
Excuse me, someone needs to mute, please. Whoever's not speaking needs to mute.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
So with that being said, um, I think it's brilliant for us to move up the timeline. Um, then even from what I had originally proposed, um, to be effective as of tomorrow. And so that's why I make that uh, motion to amend.
Okay. Discussion on, on the motion. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like, uh, just on the amendment.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to further amend the ordinance to uh, change to put in the, the comments that we received from legal today to make it in accordance with what we received from the Board of Public Health. And I am still in favor of the mask mandate coming off. But I'd like to read it. I said I'd like to amend ordinance oh twenty one oh sixty five by replacing the last paragraph with the following. Now therefore, the City of Nashville ordains that oh twenty oh eighteen and oh twenty twenty oh twenty nine are hereby rescinded as of eleven fifty nine. And we can use the date the Alderman Clemmons just used. The following guidance be provided via the ordinance to the citizens of Nashville. In accordance with the interim public health recommendations for fully vaccinated people established by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, members of the public who are fully vaccinated are no longer required to a face, wear a face mask covering over their mouth and nose outdoors or indoors where businesses conducted unless required that that business organization or work site in Nashville requires a mask. The Board of Health and the Board of Aldermen highly recommends members of the public who are not fully vaccinated should continue to wear a mask for their own protection and that of others that are fully vaccinated or until appropriate health organization deems it safe to not wear a mask. In accordance with CDC recommendations, unvaccinated persons are recommended to stay six feet from those they do not live with and are recommended to avoid crowds and poorly ventilated indoor spaces. The next paragraph, number three, the Board of Health requires that people traveling on public transportation, planes, trains, buses, and large crowds and indoor settings and healthcare facilities continue to wear masks that cover their nose and mouth in accordance with federal guidelines. Um, paragraph four, the Board of Health recommends local businesses establish their own policies and protocols regarding to face coverings and masks to protect their staff and patrons. The Board of Health strongly urges that essential businesses at a minimum establish hours, processes, or environments where masks must be worn for the comfort and safety of vulnerable persons. Paragraph five, the Board of Health recommends that businesses weigh the risk of protecting the patrons and their staff. If a business requires a mask covering, this would mean both vaccinated and unvaccinated people must comply. As at present, there is no way to universally accept way to establish between the two. And paragraph six, the Board of Health strongly recommends that schools continue to require masks until students are vaccinated, but the final decision remains with the Board of Education. The Board of Health strongly, next paragraph, the Board of Health strongly recommends that all those with conditions who are taking medications that weaken your immune system continue to take all precautions, even if you are fully vaccinated, as you may not be fully protected. This does not keep us from, from rescinding the mask mandate as directed, but it gives additional guidance to the citizens of Nashville as presented to us from the Health Department through legal.
You've heard that motion. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. Um, so I had approached Alderman Willshire earlier, like, well, immediately after the Board of uh, Health Meeting regarding this because, um, as uh, Alderman um, Clemmons had mentioned, he didn't, he, he had, when he had looked at the CDC guidelines and did not wait for the Board of Health uh, to have their discussion and make their recommendation. The Board of Health has been asked to have that discussion and that recommendation since January. And their difficulty as medical practitioners and in their role as Board of Health um, professionals that we appoint them to to make health recommendations is that it's very difficult to figure out statistical data-driven guidelines for this particular situation. Um, when it's safe and when it's not, because there isn't a way to identify who's vaccinated and who's not. And there isn't universal access to the vaccination yet, so there are populations and situations. Um, I know that the uh, that public transportation was one that was mentioned. Um, and that schools were mentioned, although it's, you know, the point was made that that's in the Board of Education's Bailey Week, not ours. Um, but then additionally, places like homeless shelters where you can't account for what everybody's experiences is and what their infection rate is. And it's very, very important to prevent an outbreak in Nashville because while the vaccine improves your resistance to the, the infection, it's not one hundred percent. And although it does increase your um, ability to um, manage the, the infection, you can still get it, you can still transport it, and you can still pass it on to people who are unvaccinated. So the Board of Health struggled with that very heavily. Um, they, they struggled with what the messaging should be. Um, and throughout that process, it's been very, very confusing for business owners and people in the community who see the CDC recommending one thing, uh, and the CDC allowing another thing, who see the governor authorizing one thing and his healthcare uh, advisors recommending a different thing. And then the, the dangers as perceived by local authorities changes from town to town. Um, some places have masks and ordinance, some don't. So the difficulty now is that in transitioning from having a masking mandate to not having a citywide one is we could confuse the public, we could, you know, create a scenario where there's uh, either confrontation or, you know, willful violation of a, of a city ordinance because people just don't understand where we're at with it. So, um, in addition to all of those circumstances, it also makes sense as, as motioned to make the um, the masking ordinance uh, recommendations that we've received take effect tonight so that it's clear to the public. We've made the decision, we've changed the, the guidelines, we've acted quickly and we're not waiting for another committee from the Aldermen to rehash what the Board of Health has already struggled with. So, um, I just wanted to clarify um, those points uh, with regards to the Board of Health's position. They're not saying that it's safe to remove masks. I've heard some people talking about, let's have mask burning parties. That's ridiculous. There's a fire danger right now for one thing. Um, but um, there are definitely positive signs. We do need to move forward and we do need to figure out how to um, encourage vaccination. So it's the intent of the Board of Health to encourage vaccination. So it's the intent of the Board of Health to encourage vaccination. Some people talk about a reward, some people talk about this being the, the end of the road. It's probably isn't. As far as public health goes, there's always things to watch out for and they're going to be the ones who continue to be the, the sentinels watching to see if there's another outbreak overseas of something that's resistant to vaccines or if there's a surge in vaccine-resistant cases here in Nashville. So the Board of Health wants to make it clear that it's not time to celebrate. They don't celebrate until everybody's healthy and until risk is mitigated. But they do recognize that there is, this is a point where we can start to modify some behaviors and some guidelines and encourage vaccination over the masking. I also wanted to point out that the wording particularly relevant to places that have critic, that are essential businesses needing to universally have protected periods of time and allow that access is important for ADA compliance because the, the concerns raised, for example, during public comment today was that we were discriminating against people based on their beliefs by forcing them to prevent them from inadvertently spreading an illness they may not know they have. But the contrary point is, is you could be inadvertently endangering multiple other people if you are unvaccinated, if you are carrying COVID nineteen and you expose vulnerable populations. So there's no way to universally check, we're not walking around with stickers on or anything like that. There's a most, there's been a campaign nationwide to prevent inspecting any vaccination cards to prove that people who say that they're vaccinated actually are. So you have to apply it fairly and businesses who choose to say like, okay, in order to protect the higher level of risk that occurs when more people are coming in that are not, they don't have the same defenses against the disease. Everybody has to wear the mask in order to be fair and the public needs to be cognizant of that fact. So most of that is, is, was covered in Alderman Dow's amendment. I support that amendment, I appreciate Alderman Clemmons enthusiasm for rescinding the mask ordinance entirely. And I also thank the Board of Health and healthcare workers for all of their work, regardless of public opinion, trying to focus on the, the facts that they know and the medical best practices that they're able to develop in what is still a very new disease that is not entirely understood in its long-term implications and for which there's no cure and there is not a vaccine available for all. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, President Willshire. For bringing this forward and having some earnestness in wanting to discuss this, I think that since the mandate has changed to the federal level and the state level, there's been some confusion, especially with our businesses and communities here. If I could, the question that I have, and I don't know who here might be able to answer it, but it sounds like schools are covered, it sounds like public transportation would be covered by federal federal law, I'm wondering about city buildings and particularly our meetings as well.
That's a good question.
Potentially through you too, Attorney Bolton.
Not sure I completely understand the question, there's nothing in, there's nothing in this ordinance that would mandate anything as far as city buildings go. The current ordinances do apply to public buildings as well as other places of business. But when repealed, they're repealed. And except as would fall under some of the recommendations that the Board of Health is urging, which are not mandates at all, they are mere recommendations. So there is nothing that would continue to require masks in any government building.
If I could follow up.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Bolton, are we going to see a rescind of the ability to meet remotely for city meetings? Because currently the way it is worded at the beginning of each meeting is that it's because of the governor's resolution.
Well, the governor's executive order that provided for some alterations to public meeting requirements is still in effect. You couldn't rescind that if you wanted to. He has not rescinded that. So these meetings that you're holding by Zoom would still be permitted to be held in this manner, you must provide access by means of a telephone connection and with the backup procedure to get notified if the connection failed. So there would be nothing that, nothing currently is in place that would prevent these meetings from being handled in the way they've been handled for the past year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I have to admit, I'm a little confused as to the, the CDC has stipulated that, you know, planes, trains, and et cetera, so that would be that type of transportation. You must continue to wear a mask. Are we saying the same thing when I'm looking at this and I see item three, the Board of Health requires that people traveling on public transportation, planes, trains, buses, in large crowds, indoor settings, healthcare facilities continue to wear masks that cover their nose and, and mouth. This would not, this would not put city buildings into that, is that correct? Attorney Bolton.
Don't read that to say anything about city buildings.
Okay.
The, the Center for Disease Control has throughout the entire course done, nothing would make recommendations. There have been no mandates with the exception of some rules about eviction. But as far as masks go, the CDC has had no mandatory provisions regarding masks or, or very many other things for that matter.
Okay, okay, thank you. And, and Madam President, if I could have a couple of follow-ups, reference to the city buildings again. Would that be covered under where it says basically businesses can require that? Would the, or the, because the city buildings are considered public, do we not fall under that same guidance?
One thing, it's only guidance, it's not an ordinance. If you want to require masks in City Hall or some other municipal or governmental buildings, you would have to write that requirement as an ordinance, not merely incorporate the Board of Health's list of recommendations. It says it's recommended, it's only recommended, it's not.
We are actually dropping the masking.
We're speaking. I'm sorry, I, someone was interrupting.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I think I understand that. I, I will have to state that I, I am concerned relative to whether it be City Hall or any other public building, city building, that if we don't have some type of mandate, we could have large crowds in there and so on, but I will leave it at that. And Madam President, if, if I may, I'd like to make two other statements relative to comments that have been made at the beginning, I will be voting for the, this, this particular ordinance, but I, I did want to kind of clarify some things. The New Hampshire Constitution, Part One, Article Three, very specifically states, society, society, its organization and purposes. When men enter into a state of society, they surrender up some of their natural rights to that society in order to ensure the protection of others and without such an equivalent, the surrender is void. This was written on June second, seventeen eighty-four. That is part of the New Hampshire Constitution, which basically says that sometimes we do things for society, even if it means that we have to put our, our own feelings or our own rights, as long as we're trying to protect society. RSA forty-seven seventeen X, excuse me, fifteen. They may make, they make, and they are talking about municipalities, they make, or I should say, I believe it's talking about city boards. They may make any other bylaws and regulations which may seem for the well-being of the city, but no bylaw ordinance shall be repugnant to the constitution or laws of the state. And such bylaws and ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from the time therein limited without the sanction or confirmation of any other authority whatever. Basically, what I interpret this as saying is that the municipality had the right for the protection of the people within the city to put through the mandate that we did. I know that there were many that didn't like it, there were many that were calling for it. And in the same respect, I've had more businesses that have called me and asked that we lift it and allow them to decide on their own. But I've also had a number of businesses that have called and thanked us for having put this in because it helped take the pressure off them as well as they're now having a little anxiety that they're going to get, I believe there were some members that said, if certain businesses keep it in place, I won't, I won't go to them. And that's a threat to these businesses and, and while they may want to take care of their, the safety of their employees, these people are basically saying, I don't care about your employees. And again, I will be voting to lift this, but I think we all need to kind of take a deep breath and say we've gone through a year of hell. We're not through it as, as Alderman Lopez truly pointed out, we still have a road to go. I hope that those that have been vaccinated continue to do things and those that haven't been vaccinated will take a pause and not what I, and not say that they've been vaccinated. And I'm going to tell you something, I, I've been fully vaccinated. Two, a little over two weeks after I was vaccinated, I got really sick. Called my doctor, they immediately brought me in, they felt that I had COVID, even though I had had both vaccinations and so on. And that's because I have an autoimmune disease and the medication I take does, does suppress my immune system. After that scare, thank goodness I was negative, but after that scare, they basically said to me, you know, be very cautious to where you go for this entire time and so on, and I will be cautious. But at the same time, I had a friend whose son said that he'd been vaccinated and tested negative. He wasn't fully truthful and his father ended up in the ICU. We're praying for him and we're hoping that everything's okay. But there are consequences for our actions and while I will be voting for this, I'm going to ask the public to do their part as well. So thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I, I want to say that, you know, I, I thank our, our Board of Health and our Department of Health for, for all that they've done during this, this pandemic. I'm sure that the members of the Board of Health who are volunteers, you know, they're, they're medical professionals who volunteer their time to serve in this role to help protect the public health. I, I'm sure when they agreed to do this, they had no idea that, that we would be facing a pandemic and that they would be dealing with what they had to deal with and, and, and suffer the, you know, the criticisms that, you know, that, that people have aimed at them for, you know, trying to do what, what they think is best to, to protect the public health. You know, from the time that this pandemic started, you know, it, you know, people forget that it was, you know, this is a brand new thing. This had never happened before, there was, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of confusion, a lot of missteps as they were learning how to deal with, with the disease. You know, there's a lot of trial and error, there were things that were tried, didn't work, there were other things that were put into place. Slowly, they, 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 the medical experts learned how to deal with this. And it's, and they're still learning, you know, they're still discovering new things about this thing. So from, from the beginning, and this has been very confusing to the, to the public. You know, there's, there's, there was, you know, there's been so many conflicting viewpoints expressed, you know, by by experts and by non-experts. And, you know, and the public has, has, has been subjected to all of this and it's led to a lot of confusion. And, you know, I, you know, from the time that the Board of Health recommended that we institute this mask ordinance, you know, I, I told people that, you know, the information is very conflicting, it's changing every day. And our Board of Health, you know, is made up of medical professionals, you know, that, that include a, a pulmonologist, a pediatrician. The Department of Public Health has, you know, the medical director is an infectious disease specialist. They have an epidemiologist on staff and the director of public health is, is a doctor of public health. So, you know, these people are much more qualified than I am certainly, you know, to judge all of this information and to make recommendations. When they, so I've been, you know, I've been supporting them, you know, when they, they recommended that we institute this mask ordinance, I supported them. And I voted for it then and, and the amendment that they recommended, I voted for that. And frankly, I was, you know, surprised, you know, as, as I watched the meeting, you know, I heard, you know, I heard, you know, two, if, at, at least two members of the Board of Public, of, of Board of Health and, and the the infectious disease specialists kind of, you know, suggest that, hey, that, you know, this, this thing is still, still a big problem, this, this thing is still killing people and it's, it may be too early to, to, to make these changes, but in the end, they voted to lift the mask ordinance. So I trust, I was surprised, but I trust them, you know, if they think this is the right thing to do, then that I support them, I support the lifting of the mask ordinance. What I have trouble with is, 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 i- i- is the amendment to, to adopt the recommendations. You know, the recommendations that the Board of Health is, is making is trying to tell people that even if the mask ordinance is lifted, there are, you know, still good reasons to, you know, to, to be careful and, and, you know, there are instances where, you know, you should continue to wear a mask, there, there are, you know, certain people who should continue to, to maintain distances from each other. You know, that continue to wash their hands, you know, there, there, there are recommendations that should still be followed. But we, in, in the Board of Health has the authority, I believe, to make whatever recommendations it feels are appropriate to protect our public health and to educate the public as to what they should be doing while this pandemic is still a threat. However, we, as a Board of Aldermen, we enact ordinances. Ordinances are laws, you know, ordinance say, you know, the, that if, if you, you know, you, you, you can't do something and if you do it, it's punishable by fines or even in, you know, jail time. We don't, you know, our ordinances are not designed to make recommendations. So I support the, the Board of Health. I encourage, in my opinion, I, I encourage them to, to make their recommendations and to, you know, publicize that and make the public aware of their recommendations. But I'm uncomfortable as an Alderman, as, 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 you know, with the Board of Aldermen adopting an ordinance which makes recommendations, they, it has no, no effect. You know, if you, if you don't obey these recommendations, nothing happens. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that and I don't. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that and I don't, um, so for that reason, I, 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 I support the Board of Health, but I, I don't support uh, adding these, these recommendations to, in, in the form of, of an ordinance. And, and I also have a question about the date, the timing. Somebody came up with June eight and I, I don't know if Attorney Bolton can speak to that or someone from the Board of Health is on, could speak to it or Director Bagley. But why? Why, why did they pick June eight? And, and do they have any problem with our making it tonight instead of June eight?
So I can respond, the, uh,
Thank you.
Initially, I believe Alderman Clemens was aiming for July first. You know, was it Alderman Clemens' behest that this was drafted? Um, and that, this was frankly drafted weeks ago when, uh, Alderman Clemens first, uh, expressed interest in it. Uh, Alderman Clemens then later, uh, asked that the date be changed from, uh, July first to June eighth. Um, I think there's one thing that you might want to be aware of and, and maybe by mentioning it, the public will also be aware of and avoid confusion. The mayor has seven days to veto any measure passed by the Board of Ald. Now, if he signs the measure, it goes in effect when he signs it. If seven days pass and he neither vetoes nor signs it, it goes into effect. Uh, and I don't know what the mayor's intention is in regard to this. It may be that he's going to be signing it later this evening if it passes or first thing tomorrow morning. Uh, but if he is going to take seven days and reflect on it, this measure that you adopt tonight will not take effect until after the passage of those seven days. So you may want to be aware of that and then if the public can be aware of that, it may prevent a misunderstanding of what may be uh, the state of the law tomorrow, for example.
You all said Alderman Jettie? Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, um, is the mayor on? Could we ask through you, the mayor, if he intends to sign this this evening?
Mayor Donches.
This evening? Well, I don't know about this evening. I would sign it soon, I presume.
Okay, but you are in, in, in general in support of what we're doing or trying to do this evening?
Um, well, I would support, I would sign the ordinance. Were you today?
Okay. So in that sense, I, I would, I guess, hearing the mayor say that, I would leave the date in and, and hopefully the mayor can sign it tomorrow.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, um, Alderman Clea, Article Three is my personal favorite. Reminding people that we're part of a society is a really important thing, especially for us. Um, I also have to agree with Alderman Jettie. I don't think we need to put the recommendations on this. I think it needs to be a clean bill and it should be signed as is. I think that the people in Nashua are ready for this to be lifted. I've heard from many people and I know some are quite nervous. And I think the best way that Nashua could take care of those people and understand that they might be nervous is that all businesses should be willing to post on all their entrances what their mask policy is. It's very simple. They're already, almost all of them have this. And it would, it would restore trust in walking into a, a business. Um, personally, I hate masks. I absolutely hate them. Can't breathe. I have asthma. Um, so I pretty much stay home. I probably will after this is lifted as well, uh, simply because, um, even with a, i- if I wear a mask, I'm not as protected as I would be if the other person with the virus had the mask on. So I'm not going to take a chance. Um, but I think we should really respect the people who would like the mask ordinance lifted. I think it's past time and I think it should be signed as soon as possible without the addition of the recommendations. Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Um, good discussion. I am still hung up on, um, access and access to City Hall. I know there are members of the city and community who very much want to not wear masks anymore, but are we setting ourselves up for a potential lawsuit by not allowing access to someone who might be immunocompromised um, and feel uncomfortable coming to the city, um, to do their day-to-day business?
Is that a question, Alderman Kelly?
Yep.
Anyone can sue us for anything. I think that would be an uphill climb.
Are you all set, Alderman Kelly?
I would like a follow-up.
Yes.
I would like to hear from the mayor. If we do not make them mandatory in city buildings, would they be willing to do a vulnerable population hour or something of that nature? I am concerned about access and everyone feeling safe.
Mayor Donches.
Well, I, I'm not clear on my authority to require anything in city buildings, uh, without, uh, if there's, if the ordinance is repealed, the former mask protocols are repealed. So I'd have to need, I'd need to talk to Attorney Bolton regarding what latitude there would be. I mean, I, I do believe that people who are not vaccinated actually should continue to wear masks inside. And that's, of course, what's being recommended, but not required in terms of what the Board of Health has done. Um, so I need to talk to Attorney Bolton regarding the legal issues involved.
Alderman Kelly? Okay.
Alderman Gathright.
Alderman Gathright.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have a great concern for those that feel as though recommendations really do not mean anything. Because there are a lot of people here in Nashua, we have those that want the mask, we have those that don't want, want the mask, you know? But I feel that it would be good business just to put the recommendations out there because some people need that extra, um, push or that extra, uh, feeling of comfort, knowing that I've read these recommendations and this might be a good idea. Maybe this is something I can do. Maybe this is something I can share with others. I think that the Board of Health has done a lot of work, truly a lot of work in this city to get us on the right path and we are on the right path. So to ignore recommendations, I think that's a bit, I don't, I'm trying to think of a good term that I would like to say about something like that. Knowing that these people have worked very hard to come up with recommendations so that everyone would have a, a, a feel for looking out for this or that, you know, it's not that they have to do anything, but I think the recommendations are important and I definitely will be voting for the recommendations, but I also will be voting for the bill, but I hope it's, uh, to pass as amended. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, in support of Alderman Gathwright's word searching, I would propose disgraceful, disingenuous, unfortunate, um, political. Um, I think personally, I, my, we are all responsible for whatever our platforms are and whatever we communicate to our voters and what we, we, what we are willing to commit to in terms of behaviors. And I think, um, most of us have committed to letting the Board of Health do its job and make appropriate health recommendations. And that's what got us to this point. And it wasn't as fast as some people wished and it's too early for other people. That's where politics comes in and we have to make a decision. You know, ideally, I'd like to see us making this decision with the best information that we have in the safest way possible within reason and within the context. So I think we are on the path to, uh, rescinding the masking ordinance. Um, the recommendations that were made by the public health give us the credibility to do this, especially when some of us may have been claiming that we were supporting public health this whole time um, and recommendations, uh, and maybe now are a little bit more open to just it's time because we decided. This is a larger issue. There's, there's party politics and national politics where maybe one party kept saying, follow the science and we're using healthcare as our guide. And then, uh, when they actually had the opportunity said, we're picking a date because we like this date and it's very important. So we're doing that date and everything fall online. Uh, but this is local politics and this is local communities. We're the ones who are going to have to live directly with the consequences of our actions. And I take that pretty seriously. We've lost people in Ward Four. We've, I've had friends and family struggle with COVID nineteen, our mayor. Um, and I think it's important that we remember that the, the consequences here aren't just political. It's not our opportunity to just say, I want to do what's popular. Um, I think the Board of Health is the, the body that our city charter says we consult with. This board did not support them with their recommendations for curfew. Um, so it's, we definitely have the right to assert our own, uh, authority within reason. I just, I find it unfortunate that some Aldermen choose to use that, that authority in that particular way personally. Um, I would like to know, um, from Attorney Bolton with regards to Alderman Kelly's, um, concerns. There is a provisor for, um, essential businesses. Does City Hall count under that category? Would we be able to say there's, uh, you know, before ten AM, you, everyone in the building needs to be wearing a mask because of, that's how the, the recommendations were written? Um, and then continue to offer service afterwards for everybody who does not want to wear a mask and wants to exercise that particular freedom?
These recommendations by the Board of Health are not law. They are not mandatory. So I, I think whether, I don't think city government is a business. So if, if I were drafting something of that sort, I would say government offices or government facilities. I would not, I would not, and in general, interpret government or the word business to include government. But my point is, that doesn't matter. Someone could go around not following these recommendations and that doesn't breach the law at all. They're not subject to a fine. They're not subject to any enforcement. And if we're letting everyone else in the building, we have to let those people in the building as well.
Can I have a clarification?
If, if you want, if you want there to be rules on who enters the building and what time and when masks are required and when they're not required, we should put them in the ordinance. And if not this ordinance, another ordinance. And if, if, uh, we are informed, if the legal department is informed of what any one of you desires to introduce, we can draft that for you. But up to now, I've heard absolutely no discussion. No one has contacted my office about writing rules about when a mask has to be worn in City Hall, when not, or, or any, anything of that nature at all. So if, if any of you desire that, uh, we'll be working tomorrow and we'll have whatever you desire ready for the next meeting.
Can I ask a clarification of Attorney Bolton?
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, Attorney Bolton, you said the statement that if a person decides not to follow these recommendations, there's no law ordinance requiring them to. You were speaking in reference to City Hall. If a business says we require masks on our premises, is there an obligation on the person to follow the wishes of that business?
Yes, if they are in violation of, of what the business is requiring, they're guilty of criminal trespass. They can in fact, wouldn't happen. But in theory, they could be found guilty of a misdemeanor and sentenced to twelve month in the house, twelve months in the House of Correction. So yes, if a business says you can only come into this facility if you're wearing a mask and someone comes in without following that requirement, they are guilty of criminal trespass. So yes, there is teeth in that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because I understand what you're saying about, we can't just arbitrarily make um, decisions about what we think will happen at City Hall without actually providing some kind of guideline or law that we ask you to review and vet, but.
They're not guideline. That guideline is something entirely different. Ordinance is law. Guideline is recommendation. Guideline is, we hope you do this.
Okay. Well, the existing recommendations as public health has laid, or as, uh, the Board of Public Health has laid them out, um, are that we remind the public and support local businesses that may choose to operate in a certain manner. So that was my intention was to point out that businesses do still have the right to operate as they see fit. Private individuals do not have the right to tell them how to operate their businesses. And in terms of public buildings, it's your opinion, um, legal opinion, uh, that we're, we wouldn't just make rules without consulting the public. We would need to run it by legal and, and put that in the form of an ordinance.
You don't have to run it by legal. That's been generally the procedure, but you can write it yourself if that's your desire. So, you know, we, it's not essential that the legal department writes the, write these things. We're willing to. We do that, you know, on a regular basis. But that's not required. Uh, for most ordinances, it's not required to have a public hearing. Your practice has been to, at your meetings, allow public comment and to that extent, the public gets ample opportunity, but that's mo- most often not required. Um, and as I say, there's no enforcement mechanism at all in these, uh, recommendations, whether they get sort of appended to this repeal ordinance or not. Any violation of those recommendations are not punishable.
Thank you, Attorney Bolton. Then, I mean, I reiterate that it's my opinion that if public health makes recommendations, that's their job, that's their role. It's prudent to consider those recommendations and include them in the language, understanding that as Attorney Bolton has pointed out, they're recommendations, not the individual ordinances.
Let, no.
Okay. You all said Alderman Lopez?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak on the amendment?
Alderman Kelly.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, attorney, through you to Attorney Bolton, I just had a clarifying question around the school buildings. The recommendation from public health said that they would like to leave it up to the Board of Education. Just wanted to make sure legally they have that authority.
Board of Education certainly has that authority. I think the Board of Health just, I think, I, I think the Board of Health was just recommending, stating that they understood that it was the Board of Education that, uh, could make rules concerning school buildings and school children and, and so.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, so you know, hearing, hearing the discussion, am I correct, Attorney Bolton, that, uh, if we repeal the mask ordinance, uh, you know, effective tonight, that it would go into effect as soon as the mayor signs it? Uh, he's indicated he will sign it. So as soon as he signs it, so are you, are you saying that in your opinion, the city administration would, would not then have any authority to uh, control access to City Hall, you know, require a mask or require social distancing or a- a- any of those measures that they would like? require social distancing or a- any of those measures that they would lack any such authority. So after the after the mayor signs the repeal, then 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 anybody could commit to City Hall without without being masked, no matter whether they're vaccinated or not. And we would have no way of 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 preventing them from coming in or am I understanding you correctly?
Yes.
So you know, I I guess that leaves us with the choice that we could either not pass this tonight, refer to the committee. You know, as originally planned and and seek your your guidance as to how to, you know, re- rewrite the ordinance to to provide us with that authority, or I suppose, you know, I I know people are anxious about this and they want to do it as soon as possible. I suppose tonight we could we could, we could amend the the repealing language to say something to the effect that you know, that you know, the city, yes, that the city buildings or whatever language you'd recommend, the city buildings are, you know, remain under the mask requirement or that the mayor be authorized to create rules regarding mask wearing in city buildings.
You could do those things.
Okay. With if if we chose the latter, would you, do you have? I hate to put you on the spot, but are you are you able to quickly formulate something that we could adopt tonight? Or would you say that this is unfair to try to expect you to come up with language like this on the spot?
It won't be as good as if I had my colleagues in the legal department to discuss it with and time to reflect on it, but you could add notwithstanding foregoing, the mayor shall have the authority to adopt to adopt rules regarding mask wearing in City Hall or in all city buildings.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam President, if it's in order, I'd like to make a motion to add that language, to amend by adding that language as as formulated by Attorney Bolton.
Okay, so now we have three amendments.
Point of order, you can't have three amendments. Attorney Bolton can only go too deep.
Too deep, okay. So why don't we vote on the two amendments that we have? And then take up your amendment, Alderman Jettie. The First Amendment is Alderman Clemens Amendment to make the effective date twelve oh one AM on May twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. And then the list of seven paragraphs that Alderman Dowd read. So that's the motion. The motion is to amend further discussion on that motion. Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is to Attorney Bolton through you. If the mayor has doesn't sign this until tomorrow and we make it effective five twenty six, twelve oh one AM, that's actually going to be before he would sign it. Are we not confusing the public by putting this through, yet it still won't be signed? Should I know we can't amend it, but but I would look to Alderman Clemens to see if he would be willing to do the date of five twenty seven instead of five twenty six. Am I correct in that, Attorney Bolton?
Well, I don't know if people will be confused or not. I suppose some people might be and some people might not be. But the fact is, it will it will take effect when the mayor signs it. Or seven days after passage, if he doesn't sign it. And if he were to veto it, it would not take effect unless the Board of Aldermen overrode the veto. So if it says that it takes effect at twelve oh one tomorrow morning and the mayor doesn't get around to signing it till nine AM tomorrow morning, it takes effect at nine AM.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Through you to Corporation Counsel. When the city wanted to wanted to have a resident taken out of City Hall, arrested. It seems that we were treated as a as a company or a or a business. But in this case, we're not a business and we cannot you know, dictate the terms of City Hall. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. And I never said anything like that.
Could I follow up, please?
Yes.
Okay, but as City Hall, let's just stick to that part of the question. As City Hall, can we not dictate the terms of of you know, of visiting City Hall with a mask or with not? Do we lose our
You may pass an ordinance provides for regulations about conduct within city buildings. You may pass an ordinance or a provision in an ordinance that gives the mayor the authority to establish rules to that effect. I think I already discussed that possibility.
And just one follow up?
Yes.
But we can't just be lumped in with the rest of the business community, is that correct? Because I know the Okay, go on.
In my opinion, if you mean government, you say government. If you mean business, you are not talking about government. You are talking about business.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was trying to get an understanding of. Thank you.
Anyone else on motion to amend? Alderman Schmidt.
Sorry, I I'd like to vote separately on these two, if that's possible.
It is. How about we take the motion changing the final passage date of twelve oh one, May twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. We'll take that motion up first, since it was made first.
And one more question? Would would could we move the date to the twenty seventh instead of the twenty sixth? Would that be more appropriate since it would give us time to get it signed?
I don't I don't think it's really going to matter. I mean, the mayor indicated that he was going to sign it and
Okay.
Alderman Kelly, you're welcome.
No, I, Madam President, I I agree with you. I mean, I think the intent here is that is that we want to move move this along and the mayor indicated that he would sign it tomorrow morning, so.
Thank you.
I don't think, I think people are going to understand the spirit of what we're trying to do.
Okay, so the motion is for the final passage of this to be twelve oh one AM, May twenty six, twenty twenty one. Let's vote on that. Do the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. So our next motion was made by Alderman Dowd. If anyone wants him to read all those again, that's fine, but if not, anyone? Okay, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathery.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yep.
You have thirteen yays and zero, excuse me, thirteen yays and two nays.
And that motion carries. Okay, did we have a a third amendment? Alderman Jettie.
Yes, I I now move to amend by adopting the language that that was enunciated by Attorney Bolton.
So that motion would be to give the mayor the authority to make rules for government buildings.
Yes.
Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, I'm wondering if Alderman Jettie would amend it so that it it is a non-educational government building, so there's no confusion. Even though it's already spelled out in the in the ordinance that the Board of Education is going to make the decision for the schools.
Madam President.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, if the intention is to exclude the schools. Yeah, I agree that, you know, we don't have authority over the school buildings. I don't think that's within the purview of the Board of Education, so yeah, this would only apply to, you know, non-school buildings that are not governed by the Board of Education.
Okay, Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. Would the maker of the motion also? Well, I guess this is what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna say here on this. I I generally, I understand the 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 desire to do it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of like Alderman Tenza just just stated, you know, with the schools, there's also the police, the fire department, the public works. You know, then in addition to that, there's spaces that are private spaces that the city rents out to people, such as liquid therapy. Some of the places in the Hunt Building. I don't mind having the giving, I guess I don't mind having the mayor have the authority, but the thing is, is that it's it's going to be, it has to be, he has to use that authority well, and not to say that he wouldn't, but the 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 other thing is, I know for a fact, I've talked to several employees of the city and they're ready to to be maskless. I know that that's something that they desire because they've reached out to me to 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 tell me this. So, you know, I I understand the need to protect the, you know, the public and and I would support, of course, you know, having limited hours or whatever restrictive hours in the morning. And I think that the way that we're doing things with the appointments and everything and the million dollars that we spent to upgrade City Hall to make things more spaced out and things like that. I think we've done a really good job using the COVID time to really update some of these spaces to to make them more friendly for for people. I think with the appointment schedules, I think people have a lot of opportunity to be socially distant. And I'm hoping that the appointment schedule is something that can continue for, not for the general public, because believe me, I I I had to wait my turn to go into the DMV to get my car registered and that just delayed things even more for me. So I I understand people's frustration, but to maybe to make an appointment for those who are immune compromised, they can make an appointment and have a separate space in the building and things like that would be a good, I think, option. But so I guess I'm on the fence with this. You know, I don't mind, like I said, I don't mind giving the authority, but I I don't know I don't know that it would be used and to what degree. And certainly there are spaces that I think it would be inappropriate to be used, such as the the private people who are renting out private spaces that are in in the public. So I I guess I'm on the fence on this one.
Alderman Lopez.
While I recognize Alderman Clemens intent, I personally, I feel like we should probably refrain from over over regulating the mayor and what he's going to do, because he does still have the right to either veto it or not do anything for a week and then veto it like right in the last day. So I I think there's a point where we have to say, okay, as legislators, we've written the law. And when it comes to city buildings and city staff, that's within his responsibility. And if he does something that we as aldermen collectively feel is inappropriate, we should address that. But I I don't think there's a reason to second guess him in this particular case. And I feel like we shouldn't set that dynamic up in this this because the intent is to clearly communicate a citywide response to the mask mandate. And in my opinion, that that communication should be done per the Public Health Department guidelines. So I would let the mayor run City Hall and the city buildings and and let him lead by example with regards to how businesses can do, can make those decisions independently as well.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, you get four options on this. You could wait and do a separate ordinance that more clearly defines the powers of the mayor relative to the buildings. In other words, you could have legal think about it. You could limit it to only City Hall. Or you could put a time limit on it. Or if if we didn't think that the guidelines were being followed correctly, we could rescind that ordinance. But if we rescind this ordinance, I don't think that's what we want to do. I suppose we could rescind part of the ordinance. But it's just more confusing. So I'm on the fence with this as well, so.
Alderman Cleaver.
I believe the mayor should have input on anything that's kind of affects City Hall or Roy's rules that he's going to adopt or not adopt. And I think a separate, a separate ordinance would be fine and more appropriate. And and I don't, I don't think in the first place, we should put this burden on the mayor. I think it's just too complicated. And the the ordinance as is stands for itself, so I don't think so should city buildings.
All set, Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just so you know, I I think that it was it was pointed out to us that if we rescind the mask ordinance, which I, you know, I think we I I detect that there's a a a desire to do that as quickly as possible. It's been pointed out to us that that we are that we, you know, the mayor or the the city government, the that we, the mayor or the city government, the city administration would not have the ability to restrict the access to City Hall, require masking or require distancing or making any of the rules, which by the way, we have adopted the recommendation of the Board of Health, which says that business owners, you know, should be allowed to make their, you know, make rules as they deem appropriate, and that we should encourage them to do that, and we should support them in doing that. We are left with not being able to do that ourselves. So you're exposing our employees throughout the city to the the, you know, the, you know, the public choosing either to follow the recommendations or not follow the recommendations. And, you know, I don't think there's any doubt that there are people out there who you've gotten the same emails I have who are encouraging us to remove this mask ordinance, not because the Board of Health is recommending it, but because they don't think we should have adopted it in the first place. It's not constitutional in their opinion. It's not effective in their opinion. You know, they, you know, the, that the so-called science that they that they point to says that that masking has no effect whatsoever. But our Board of Health says that masking has helped and that they are encouraging, you know, not to go through their recommendations, but they are encouraging us to follow the recommendations that they've outlined, which include the recommendations of the CDC and the state epidemiologist, Dr. Chan. So there are certain people who should remain masked, and, you know, we have employees who are vulnerable and you know, without carving out the opportunity for the mayor, you know, the city administration to adopt this, you know, rules that our businesses can adopt to protect their employees and protect their customers. You know, without carving out this exception for City Hall and city buildings, we're leaving us without the same, without those same protections to adopt the recommendations that the Board of Health has made to us and that we've adopted in the amendment to this ordinance, so all the, you know, my motion, all my amendment, all that my amendment does is it gives the mayor, the administration, the ability to follow the recommendations provided by the Board of Health to protect our employees and protect the public that visit our city buildings. So I ask that you please adopt it.
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, thank you. The only thing that, so I just want to be clear, and Attorney Bolton could correct me if I'm wrong, but the whether we adopt giving the mayor the authority to do this, the only thing that it gives him the authority to do is to tell employees or to tell those in the public that they have to wear a mask in a certain city building and/or at a certain time in the city building. It doesn't restrict him from setting up policies that, you know, give a separate appointment time to certain people who are at risk or developing extended hours in City Hall or doing things to help mitigate social distancing and things like that. It has nothing to do with, with any of that. We can still do those things. The only thing that this does is give the mayor the authority to tell employees and people entering the building that they either have to, that they must wear a mask and the hours in which they have to do so. Am I correct, Attorney Bolton?
Well, at this stage, I'm not sure exactly the wording that we're discussing. I mean, I reeled something off the top of my head about the mayor would have authority to make requirements concerning COVID mitigation measures, including wearing a mask, or words to that effect.
I have it written down, if.
Read it to me, I'll, I might be able to answer the question.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. It reads, "The mayor shall have the free to adopt rules regarding masks in all city buildings."
But depending on what you want.
With the amendment of the, I'm sorry, "In all city buildings except schools" with Alderman Tenza's amendment.
Okay, you're right. It says nothing about social distancing. It says nothing about establishing hours. It says nothing about special hours for vulnerable populations. So if that's desired, I suppose that ought to be added.
But if I, if I may, if I could continue.
Yes.
That, that, don't those things already exist? Are the hours by City Hall adopted by ordinance or are they the administrative authority? And in the way that, you know, certain departments run and things like that, aren't they all, those are all administrative rules that the Board of Alderman really doesn't get involved in? Am I, am I correct?
I don't know that. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Alderman Lopez.
In my opinion, it seems plausible that we have not recently modified all the rules to City Hall by pure ordinance and that they likely had those, had some types of rules in order in the past. What we were specifically trying to accomplish with Alderman Jettie's amendment was the masking. There are many public health recommendations with regards to how business should operate and all that type of thing, which I think we probably already have control over and we have no evidence to suggest we don't have control over. I think the concern about whether somebody had access to a line or didn't have access to a line or how long their DMV registration experience was gonna be, I think if we simply allow the mayor the authority to decide how to manage masks, then that meets the public health recommendations. If it's unilaterally done, if everyone in the building is wearing a mask, then they can decide where the line's supposed to go and all that kind of stuff without us trying to legislate it, and I think that's, we need to let the mayor do in terms of running the building that he already does. The simple focus here is, when are people supposed to mask and when are they not supposed to mask? There's other recommendations that can be implemented, absolutely, but it seems like you could find all kinds of holes with this. That's what Attorney Bolton pointed out. He would be doing it on the fly and it wouldn't be perfect, but if we want to add things to it later based on things we observe, we're welcome to. All we're authorizing the mayor to do right now is to decide whether or not people are gonna wear masks and when, when they're in city buildings.
Okay, anyone else? So the amendment is to add wording that allows the mayor to have the authority to make requirements for government buildings, not including schools regarding masks. Does that sound right? Is that what we discussed?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Seeing none? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Laws.
Could you please mute anyone that's not speaking? Thank you, thank you.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
No.
Alderman Wulcher.
No.
And may I call for Alderwoman Lou, please? I did not record her vote. I have eight yeas and six nays.
Alderwoman Lou.
It said that she had left the meeting.
Okay, that motion carries. Motion before us now is for final passage of ordinance 2165 as amended. Further discussion. Okay, with the court, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow. Alderman Karen.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wulcher.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 2165 is duly adopted as amended. Period for public comment. Again, we have a three-minute limit, so if you could please keep your comments to three minutes. Paula Johnson. Mrs. Johnson?
I need to be unmuted.
She said she needs to be unmuted.
Oh, I didn't hear her, sorry.
She is unmuted.
You are unmuted. You're all settled, Mrs. Johnson. Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. I'm a little bit concerned here with the vote that the mayor's gonna get the chance to tell people who cannot come into City Hall. Again, I'm speaking for myself as a taxpayer of this city. It's really sad that we're gonna restrict people again to come in and out of City Hall because we, the people, own the building. We, the people, pay for that building, and we, the people, are being restricted again. I'd like to know how many hours a week the mayor is actually in the building and when he is in the building. You call and leave messages, but he's gonna restrict the people from coming in. I'd like to thank Alderman Clemens for coming forward with this. I thank you so much. But we, the people, have put up with a lot this year with these masks. Yes, there are gonna be people who need to wear masks, and there's people who don't want to wear masks, or people who can't wear masks because of health reasons. And to again, say to us in public buildings, these are our buildings. We own it with our taxes. We have been paying a lot in taxes this year. We're seeing our taxes go up again, and yet you're telling us, the public, when we can and cannot come into this building and that we have to wear masks to come into the building. Shame on all of you. The control is out of control. Thank you very much.
Beth.
I wanted to address.
Name and address for the record, please.
His testimony on.
Name and address for the record.
Bath Scare, East Hobart Street. Yep, Bath Scare, East Hobart Street.
Okay.
I just wanted to address Mayor Donst's testimony in opposition to SB 52 this week, which is to protect our the city's spending cap. He suggested that no one in the city was outraged about the spending of the mayor and the aldermen. And he also said, because the people pushing to get this passed to protect their spending cap have lost their races for aldermen, then spending cap is not something people want. He also pointed out that all you guys are voting in lockstep, and the spending cap wouldn't do any good against a lot of you and your spending, spendthrift ways. I want to tell the mayor, if he's listening, that there's a lot of people who are furious with the spending. We want our spending cap. And God willing, someday we'll get some conservative people on the board and the spending cap will be put to good use. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to give public comment?
Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. You know, I listened to the discussion about the mask ordinance. Started off okay. The third motion was really disappointing. You know, it's like I'm listening to people discuss everything you need to do to, you know, micromanage and milk a mouse here. You're supposed to simplify this process and make it easy for people to come to City Hall and do their business. You're gonna draft up a whole bunch of rules and regulations that people are gonna have to follow again when they come in, even knowing what the hours are that are gonna be for certain people, and whether they mask or don't mask, and it puts people in this quandary of violating rules that they're not even familiar with exist anymore, and they've got to be conscientious of it, and it just sets up, you know, a lot of issues and problems, and I don't think it was necessary. I think it's a control issue. I don't think you need to have that level of control. I don't think you have to put that on the mayor or anyone else, you know, open the building. If you, if you, you know, open the building and you see issues arise or there is some outbreak, then, you know, you can readdress it, but that's the whole purpose of trusting what's gone on with the health program, where we've taken this and moving forward. I think those City Hall and these government buildings are paid for by the people, are really owned by the people. And I understand, you know, compromised people, let them wear their masks. Hopefully, they vaccinated. They've done what they need to do. If they need to have a mask on, they do it. There's a lot of email and mail options to get information into City Hall, and I don't think you need special hours and a special routine for a certain group. I think you just make it as easy as possible to open up your spaces and let people come use them.
Next, we have Allison Dyer.
Hello, thank you. Yes, Allison Dyer. It's Wellman Avenue in Nashua, New Hampshire. And I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I did, I do appreciate the repeal of the mask ordinance here in Nashua, however, it is still a little bit tough where there's this false choice between public health and individual freedoms. We've kind of accepted this as binary, so that has invited politicians to politicize it. Public health, in other words, is inconsistent with the right to be left alone. Of all the risk factors for disease or injury, it would seem now today that freedom would be the most pernicious, and I'm not really sure when we changed over to this. We can't trust anybody. We look at everyone as a threat, but we just want the option back. I think that there should be no rules other than the recommendations provided, and people can do with those as they wish. We seem to have missed that and, you know, unfortunately, walked away from that. We seem to have missed that and, 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 you know, unfortunately walked away from that, and I think that that is something that we need to get back to where everyone can make their own individual choices and we move on, so, thank you.
AJ Todd.
Yes, I just wanted to also comment on.
Name and address for the record, please.
It's AJ Todd, delivered for Greeley Street, Nashua. I just also wanted to comment on, uh, my disappointment in the decision to allow the mayor to restrict access to our house. You know, maybe if he wants to continue to restrict access to our house, we should stop paying him. I don't think that that's right at all, and I don't think it's your guys' authority to do that. That's our house, we pay for it, it's the taxpayers. And I also wanted to get on here really quick and say that I'm very disappointed at this, the cities, this city's decision not to have a Memorial Day parade again. You know, we were sitting here listening to anti-hate, we're gonna have an anti-hate parade, which I always encourage, uh, that type of behavior, I, I'm not gonna condemn it at all. Well, we can't even honor our dead, we can't even honor, we can't even do anything patriotic for our city. We've missed Fourth of July, we're gonna miss Fourth of July again this year. I'm so tired of it, and I want the city to do something patriotic for once, and then hold the Memorial Day parade. I imp- I implore all of you to do so.
Charles.
Uh, hi, Charles Forster, nine St. James Place, Nashua, New Hampshire. I just wanted to say that it's really shocking to hear for the past, I don't know, twenty to thirty minutes, people go back and nitpick this mask mandate, oh, let's repeal it, but then let's add this, let's add these recommendations. I really applaud Jan Schmidt for actually promoting self-responsibility, saying, look, let's let the businesses do what they wanna do. I think I speak on behalf of a lot of citizens where we can no longer tell the difference between what's actually for our own health and what's actually virtue signaling, and a lot of us are tired of it. I really appreciated Jan Schmidt, uh, Jan Schmitz, you know, i- it was totally simple. I think people should have gone with that and just moved on, but for the past twenty to thirty minutes, it was nitpicked and, and it's all very confusing to us again. So, that's all I have to say, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to give public comment? Anna Wendell.
Oh, sorry.
Anna Wendell.
This is Anna Wendell, Salem Street in Nashua.
Okay.
I just want to applaud the Board of Aldermen for taking the time to listen carefully to what the Board of Health had to say, take that into consideration, and to continue to work to protect our citizens in Nashua. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to address the board?
Madam President.
Oh.
Y- yes, uh, could you give me your name and address, please, for the record?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know if I was over speaking. Uh, so my name's Alicia Houston, uh, Westwood Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. Uh, I wanted to, and I, I believe that this may be like the first time that I've ever said this, um, I wanted to actually applaud, uh, represent, or sorry, Alderwoman, um, Jan Schmidt for having the vote of her constituents at her heart. I truly appreciate that show of, um, support, uh, as a Nashua resident. Uh, I wanted to take a moment just to discuss, um, some constructive criticism. Um, even though we are on virtual meetings, I do believe that we should have and hold ourselves accountable to having the cameras on, uh, as representatives of this city, as aldermen and women. Uh, it's really important that you remain engaged, uh, and it's, it's good optics for the citizenry that we are, that you guys are available and in person. Additionally, um, those who have their cameras on, I appreciate it. However, I would definitely caution you guys that, um, some of the things that the public is seeing are not necessarily things that you would be doing during a public meeting, had it been in person. Uh, and finally, I wanted to ask that the Board of Aldermen, uh, just as the Board of Education and other committee, uh, committees within the city have done, we, we need to see you guys back in person, um, and it, it would really eliminate some of these naffos with, um, with virtual meetings, if you guys were back into the City Hall, um, and I, again, appreciate and applaud you, I know that brevity is key, um, and I think that in voting future, we should always remember that the more that you cloud it, the harder it gets to interpret, um, especially for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to, uh, Mayor, I know you would, uh, want to speak.
Well, just a brief, uh, I wanted to mention the Veterans Day Parade. I mean, the Veterans Council decides, um, how to run the parade, and, you know, the decision had to be made months in advance because we needed the high school bands, and they were telling the Veterans Council that they, you know, they weren't available, uh, they couldn't organize it, so I, I mean, I think the decision was a reasonable one at the time, and everybody in the Veterans Council said that, you know, we were confident we could hold the Veterans Day Parade in November, but, you know, several months ago when the decision was made, it didn't seem like it would be practical to hold the Veterans Day Parade, so I, I mean, I don't wanna second guess them, and maybe now we could, but we can't do that on a few days' notice. Anyway, um, that's all I wanted to offer, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Last call for public comment. Marilyn Todd. Marilyn. Marilyn Todd. Okay, I don't know if she just can't hear me, but she has her hand raised. Um, okay, I'll call one more time, Marilyn Todd. Um, no response, I will contact Christopher Ware.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, this is Christopher Ware, East Hollis Street in Nashua. Um, I, I appreciate everyone working so hard to get this thing figured out tonight. I know it's a late night, I don't wanna keep anyone later than they need to be. I do think it's important that, rather than look back at the nightmare that was last year, and this entire process that all this went through, that we really look forward to the next occasion in which we will need to rely on the aldermen, the mayor, and the Health Department. We can't foresee what that would be, but I would say if we were to analyze what happened over the past year, as far as politically, as far as getting recommendations from the Health Department, it was a complete disaster. Um, everything was very slow-moving, nothing that should have been an emergency-oriented thing was treated as such, and I think people kinda gauge their feelings and their behavior based on that. So I think there's a lot that could be looked at over what happened this past time to help better prepare everyone the next time something happens. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, once again, I still see Marilyn Todd's hand raised. Okay, um, we will conclude public comment. Remarks by members of the board. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanna make it, uh, absolutely clear that because we gave the mayor the right to, um, put up signs, keep people out during certain times, uh, offer special times, it doesn't mean that it'll happen. It means that if we find that it's necessary, as someone had suggested who called in, should, should numbers go up, should, should we start to worry about this? The mayor could take this step. We've given him that right. Honestly, I think everybody's going to behave well on this. I think everybody's gonna understand their responsibility, and so we're counting on them, and I'm awfully glad we passed this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, thank you. Um, I wanted to just clarify, uh, my vote for anyone that's, that's listening, so obviously I supported this legislation, and I supported Alderman Dow's, uh, amendment, and the reason being is that I felt that it was good to put the Board of Health's recommendations as they were, again, just recommendations, as, um, uh, my colleague, uh, Alderman Gathright also pointed out, that, you know, it's good to put their hard work and effort and recognize it, and the reason that I supported it was because they were simply guidelines and not, uh, edicts from, um, from us. So that's why I supported that, and I, and I did not support Alderman Jettie's amendment, um, to give the mayor authorization, because I think that there are, I think that there are other entities, like the Fire Department, Police Department, uh, different buildings that really need to make that decision, and those organizations need to make those decisions for themselves. Um, and while I respect the, the mayor, um, I just think that, um, we were better off with a clean, a clean-cut ordinance, so, uh, that was my, uh, my vote, and, um, other than that, I wanna wish everybody, uh, um, a good Memorial Day. Um, may we remember, uh, the soldiers who gave the greatest sacrifice, and, um, um, hopefully, you know, in the future, we'll be able to hold a parade. I understand that, uh, what the mayor was saying, that it was too late to put one together, um, but I hope that in the future, we can, um, you know, make sure that, uh, that that happens going forward, so, um, thank you all very much, and, um, I appreciate, uh, everybody's, uh, consideration this evening.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Um, regarding the, the comments, uh, about the Veterans Day parade, or not, Memorial Day Parade, I'm sorry, um, as the mayor said, it's not a city decision exclusively, the organizers have to be considered too, and that, I don't know if the public understands exactly how much planning goes into those parades. Um, it's also worth mentioning that the Pride Parade is not happening, it's a Pride, a virtual Pride Festival, um, and the announcement made earlier, uh, was not a parade either, it's a unity, uh, gathering, I think, but there's, they're not locking down any streets or, or anything like that. Um, so it's worth pointing that, that stuff out, but parades aren't really the only way to honor veterans, uh, or to remember, um, those who have, have given their lives for our service. I really think that the better way to do that is to support people now who serve with those people, um, honor them in, in meaningful ways, uh, beginning with recognizing that there's veterans on our Board of Aldermen, and they're obviously very supportive of, of veterans, um, in my opinion. Um, I know Alderman Jettie serves with me on the Board of, um, Operation Enduring Welcome, and we founded it specifically to build stronger communities between, um, veterans and, and citizens. I know that the Board recently just passed the, uh, Veterans Memorial, um, Parkway name change from the Broad Street Parkway, um, and recently, um, the Boys and Girls Club, in partnership with Involved to Impact, have begun decorating the, um, the street barriers along Factory Street, being away from Delaina's House, um, in a patriotic manner explicitly to do something special. So, I mean, the thinking was like, when pe- kid, when people are walking out of there to, to go to their appointments, or, um, to try to, you know, address the problems they have, they can literally be their own parade, walking past a bunch of reminders and positive messages that kids have made, so I would say support organizations that support veterans for Memorial Day. Support Harbor Care Clinic, or Harbor Care as an organization, because they host Buckingham Place, and they, they run the Delaina's House, which are both programs for homeless veterans, um, Buckingham Place for veteran families, um, support, uh, programs like the VFW, um, that, that offer a place for, for people to gather and remember people that they've lost, and also, you know, find resources and move forward. There's a lot of ways to celebrate Memorial Day that are just as effective, I think, as a parade, um, and would be just as well-received by, uh, people involved. In addition to that, I also, uh, wanted to try to clear up at least my understanding of the masking ordinance we just rescinded. We rescinded the masking ordinance, doesn't seem like it's clear to the public. We included the public, uh, health guidelines. There are some areas where other considerations do have to be made, and there are other entities involved, like the schools, but we did rescind the citywide ordinance, and it's my understanding from the vote that we specifically gave them, the mayor, authority over making rules for masking. We did not let him, give him any new powers to change access or, um, or times to, to use City Hall. I think if people choose to, to refuse to patronize a business because that business is following a mask ordinance, or has chosen to create its own rules for its own safety, then that's their choice, but nobody told them to make that choice, and their rights are not being infringed on, they're exercising their right to not patronize that business. Likewise, if the mayor does decide to make rules about, uh, when people have to wear masks, in recognition of people who are more concerned, or more vulnerable, or immune-compromised based on, um, health, uh, knowledge and information, then you choosing not to exercise your right to access City Hall during that time and follow that because you don't wanna mirror mask, that's your right, but you're not being restricted from access, you're just choosing not to follow the guidelines that are set. The same way, if Michael Buckley over at, uh, um, one of his restaurants says, you need to wear a shirt in order to sit down, you're not being discriminated against by being asked to leave if you show up without a shirt. So I think it's important that people differentiate when their rights are being infringed upon, and when they're deliberately choosing to pursue their own ideology. I think a lot of politics have come into place tonight, it didn't necessarily have to, and there's definitely a lot of confusion, but it's not being helped by people who will immediately contradict things that were said very specifically in the meeting, because they're frustrated, and that's where they're coming from. So I think people, people need a clear message, and I, then I think we should give them that. We, we took the mask mandate down. If there are specific locations that ask you to behave a certain way, that's just paying attention to where you are. Thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I would wish everybody a very happy, uh, or safe Memorial Day, keeping in mind what Memorial Day really means, and it's remembering those we've lost, and everybody should keep in mind that there's been sacrifice after sacrifice, sacrifice for us, and that's what Memorial Day should mean to all. Secondly, uh, anytime we're going to give the mayor administrative duties or his staff, uh, new responsibilities associated with the buildings or whatever, I think we should consult the mayor first, and write the, the ordinance second, rather than the other way around. I, I, I very much dislike this method of, uh, in, ensuring that City Hall gets confused. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alderman Cleaver.
Uh, uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I, I'm gonna ask for a personal privilege i- in, in a moment, but I'd like to, uh, thank the United Way, or I should say congratulate the United Way, um, for all that they've done. Um, they're, they're amazing, amazing group, and, um, I appreciated Michael Affenberg's, um, shout-out, um, to my, uh, mask pushing, as I used to, as I used to put it all the time. Um, United Way did incredible things during, um, this pandemic. Um, they were right there, they helped all the other nonprofits, um, everybody worked together so well, and, um, I was proud to, to work with them. I'd also like to give a shout-out and a thank you to the Toll Street Mission. Um, this past weekend, they, um, put together a cleanup of Whitney Street and all the side streets. Um, I worked with them, I worked with all the volunteers. It was absolutely amazing. They did, uh, much further than what I had done with Lock Street and so on. They cleaned the streets, they, um, literally cleaned the streets, as well as the sidewalks and so on, but they also helped people clean their yards. Um, they, they brought rakes, and, um, as, as a result, there were people out there that were raking and cleaning, um, they offered plants, they did all kinds of things. They went so far above and beyond. They normally have a, um, kind of a block party, but this year, because of the, that, um, the COVID, um, pandemic going on, they didn't wanna have that, but they still had cotton candy, and there were a lot of children that volunteered, grabbed rakes, went out there and did that, they had hot dogs. Soul Sisters came out and, um, made box lunches or bag lunches, I should say, for everybody. It was truly an amazing day on, on, um, Saturday, and I was so proud to stand with these people and to, uh, get my hands dirty once again. And the next thing I'd like, um, Madam President, is I, I'm gonna call it a, a personal privilege, um, and, and I'd like to just read something that I wrote, if that's okay with you. And, and I'd like to just read something that I wrote, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Thank you. And I, and I ask the other members, thank you so much for putting up with this. But I, as I said, I'm going to ask for the personal privilege and I'd like to speak to something somewhat personal to me. May is Mental Health, Mental Health Awareness Month, and I believe it's important to have those difficult and for some uncomfortable conversations. Many of you may know that I recently lost two dear friends, both 66 years old, both the most wonderful and kind-hearted men that I was in awe of. One passed from an undiagnosed heart disease that may not have taken his life if he had gone to the doctors rather than ignoring his symptoms. If he'd gone to the doctors, I honestly believe that he would have received priority care because in this country, we pay attention when someone has chest pains. Sadly, I lost my other friend to suicide. David lost his battle with mental illness. He leaves behind a beautiful young wife and two beautiful daughters who are just starting their lives. As I said, he lost his battle with his mental illness. He was not undiagnosed, and I'm sure that the physicians that he was seeing did what they could to help through both medication and counseling. The one thing that they could not help with is the perceived shame and the stigma of mental, excuse me, too many like David experienced. I'm asking you all today to help me and so many others start that conversation and reduce, if not eliminate, that stigma and shame of mental illness. This was not David's first attempt at suicide, but as you know, today, it was his last and most successful. Not only did David leave behind so many who loved and admired him, but he left us all with so many unanswered questions. I'm not sure if David were here today, if he could, if he would even be able to actually answer any of these questions. Because unlike cancer, heart disease, or diabetes, so much is unknown about mental illness and how to help those who suffer. Telling someone to be strong and tough your way through does not help someone with a mental illness. No one wants cancer, heart disease, or diabetes, and no one wants any mental illness. We can't just tough our way through it. We need to make sure that everyone who needs help gets help. And if they refuse, then we just need to be there when they're ready for us to help. Compassion and love will not cure or fix a mental illness, but it helps to know that you're not alone and there is no shame in what you are going through. Since David's passing, I've tried to make some sense of it, but honestly, there's no way to make real sense of any loss, let alone that of suicide. When I've heard, what I've heard, learned is that there are many resources out there, and I have learned that mental illness does not have a one size fits all solution. There is not a single medication nor a single form of counseling that can help everyone. Sadly, it's a true trial by error. David went through many medications, some that helped but caused other issues and some that had no effect at all. I know David, I know, I don't know why David felt so hopeless, but he could not go on any longer. I do know that he had to feel so desperate that he felt it was the only way out, even leaving his wife and daughters that he loved desperately. I don't want David's death to go unspoken. I don't want David's family to feel that their loss is just one more statistic. So as I said, I've been earnestly trying to do my homework, learn as much as possible about mental health in this country and in our beautiful state of New Hampshire. I've learned so much and yet learned, I know so little, as probably many of you feel. The first thing that I'm learning is that none of us are alone in this journey. There are so many people who are there to help us learn, to help us understand, but equally as devastating is the fact that in this country and in this state, mental health care funding is below par. We treat mental health as if it's not equal to a physical ailment, even reimbursing mental health care workers less than those of health care workers, other health coworkers. What I do want to say is that regardless of the reimbursement rates and the lack of psychiatrists here in New Hampshire, there are people and organizations that want to help. Sadly, because of the lack of resources, many who need help may have to wait three or six or even nine months to get initial visit. International Mental Health Center recently had a discussion center, session, sorry, with the Honorable Chief Justice John Broderick. It started with a video of Justice Broderick speaking about his story and asking for help to break down barriers, remove the stigma to increase awareness. He spoke about the fact that mental illness is just that. It's an illness that, as I said, no one asks for, no one deserves. He spoke to the fact that we need to treat it as diabetes, cancer, heart disease, et cetera. If someone was having a heart problem, would they be expected to wait three, six, or nine months for an initial appointment? I don't think so. And to quote Justice Broderick, that would be actually immoral. So I guess I don't understand why it happens today for those needing mental health care. Chief Justice Broderick's video spoke about his son's alcoholism, learning later that it was a tool to self-medicate his battle with mental illness. He also spoke about the family struggles along the way. He speaks to schoolchildren and adults to help eliminate the stigma and perceived shame of mental illness. While mental illness does not necessarily equal suicide, the rate of suicide due to mental illness is on the rise. He usually starts each discussion with anyone who has not had to deal with a personal issue, sorry, asking anyone who has not had to deal with a personal issue of mental illness or known a friend or family member with the disease to please stand up. As he'd look around the room, he was stunned that almost no one stood up. When I would speak to people about cancer, I often found that I got the same response. Like many diseases, mental illness touches all of our, all or most of our lives, and it needs to be treated like it doesn't, it can't be treated like it doesn't exist or that it can be cured. Sorry, it goes beyond common sense. Over the years, I've lost eight family members and friends, including David, to suicide. And each time, I pray that it's the last, that I will ever have to live through. But sadly, I no longer believe that is the case. Chief Justice gave out some eye-popping statistics during his discussion after his video that honestly scared me. He spoke about the result of CDC 2019 High School Students Questionnaire, and I won't sit here and give you all those statistics, but I will ask that they be included in the minutes along with the link to Chief Justice Broderick's videos. I do want to state that per the CDC, suicide is the second most cause of death in our high schools. I will share one set of numbers that Chief Justice shared. In our country, there are 1.4 million lawyers, 650,000 CPAs, and only 20,000 psychiatrists. With the number of people in need of help, we have to ask why so few psychiatrists? I can only guess that it's related to the high cost of education and the low pay and reimbursement. I can't bring David back or my Uncle Jack or my cousins Ronnie, Michael, and Tommy or my friend Eddie or my friend Laura, who was killed by her father, Richard, in a murder-suicide or my ex-husband, Michael. With the exception of Laura, each of these people took their own lives because of stigma of mental illness and what they felt it was doing to their families. While we can't fix the problem tonight, we can start a conversation and we can listen to those who know so much more than we do and we can work to fix our broken system. We have so many incredible mental health care heroes all around the city, state, and country, and even on this board. We need to give them the tools they need to help each of us who has been touched by mental illness, and we need to break down the barriers to, to getting help. Please remember that mental illness is a lifelong battle like other diseases such as diabetes. There's no quick fixes, and sometimes we need to try different modes of care to help the patient and family to get to a better place. Love, compassion, and understanding can go a long way, but we need to begin the conversation that anybody with a diagnosis of mental illness is the same as anyone with the diagnosis of diabetes or cancer. I know I've gone on long, and I, I thank you for listening, but I'm going to ask that at the end of this meeting, when it is posted that some information I've put up, be put up at the end of this meeting and included in the minutes. Thank you. I really appreciate your time. I know it's a long night. Again, thanks.
Anyone else? Remarks by the board? Seeing none? Not missing anyone, right? Committee announcements. Alderman Dow.
Yes, tomorrow night, right after the meeting that's certainly going to be announced by Alderman O'Brien in a minute, will be budget and it will be in the chamber. Based on the governor's still mandate, there's no public allowed in. The presenters have the option of coming in and sitting in the audience. And the committee members will sit in the chamber and any of the ultimate would like to come can come, but they have to sit in the, in the audience as well due to the spacing requirements that we still have. So that's budget tomorrow night. And then on Thursday, Joint Special School Building Committee via Zoom at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. As stated by Alderman Dow, at 7:00 PM Wednesday, the 26th will be infrastructure. The meeting will be on Zoom. However, as Chairman, I'm also on the Budget Committee, so I will be in the chamber. But the other committee members, you can join in via Zoom if you so wish. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Committee announcements. Seeing none? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the May 25th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Carey. Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Also no.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Oh, yes.
Alderman Lawrence.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry, Catherine.
Yes.
Alderman Molsher.
Yes.
You have 11 years and two names.
And we are adjourned at 11:11 PM. Great meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Someone make a wish.